This meeting is going to start at six o'clock, I think, I'm pretty sure.
Just as a general, general announcement, I've been having connectivity problems all afternoon, getting kicked off and having to go restart my link modem and all. So if I get kicked off, I'll be back. It'll just, I may have to get up and jump up and down a couple of times.
We're missing a few, but everyone's gonna pop on, I think. There's one.
Do we have a quorum?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. We got that. Okay, we've got it. We've got one, two. Seven of us. Okay.
Yeah, we do. Okay.
Two Z's. Okay. Okay, so let's just go ahead and get started right at six o'clock. It's Wednesday, August nineteenth, 2020. Tonight is our third evening of council budget hearings for the 2021 budget. Tonight, we're gonna have six budget presentations and five straw poll votes on those. One is just a presentation and chance for Q and A. For each one, we'll hear the presentation and allow three minutes for council member questions. If we need to go to multiple rounds of questions like we have in the past, that's totally fine. Then we'll open it up for public comment as we voted on Monday, two minutes per speaker. Tonight, we're gonna try to just make sure everyone gets their two minutes. And so I will let you know when it is two minutes and at two ten, you will be muted. So you'll have 10 seconds to wrap up. Well, we can repeat this also as people come onboard and everything since I assume not everyone who wants to comment is on the call yet. Okay, so then we'll come back for additional comments. Council questions and comment and do a straw poll vote after that if it's one of the five that we're voting on. And that's what we'll do. So tonight, here's what we'll be discussing. We're gonna kick it off with Bloomington Transit. Lou May, the general manager, has 25 minutes to present to us. From there, we have Bloomington Housing Authority, Housing and Neighborhood Development, Economic and Sustainable Development, Community and Family Services, and then Parks and Rec as our final budget. So Lou May, if you're ready, we can get started.
Good evening. My name is Lou May. I'm general manager for Bloomington Public Transportation Corporation. Thank you for the opportunity to present our 2021 proposed budget. And tonight, for the first time via Zoom, hopefully it's the last time via Zoom. If I was presenting this in person tonight in the council chambers, I would introduce to you our controller, Krista Browning, who I, is joining us via Zoom tonight. I want to give a special shout out to her as she did all the work in preparing this budget and I've got the the privilege of presenting the budget to you tonight. This is my 22nd budget to present to council on behalf of Bloomington Transit. I appreciate the support of the council over the years, the mayor, our board of directors, the employees at Bloomington Transit, and our customers who have all helped to make us the success that we've been for so many years. Our budget has been reviewed and approved by our board of directors. And under Indiana law, the common council also reviews and approves our board. As part of my, of my presentation tonight, I will cover some of the notable accomplishments since I was here a year ago. I will also talk about some of the key goals for the 2021 year and the budget for 2021. And I'll also discuss some of the budget details as well as the challenges and opportunities that we'll have going forward. First, I'll briefly discuss the reasons we exist. Our vision is connecting people to places. And our purpose is to deliver safe and quality transportation to the Bloomington community, to contribute toward economic and social improvement in Bloomington, to advocate for increased investment in public transportation and manage our resources efficiently and effectively.
Excuse me, Mr. May. Did you want to share screen? Do you want your slides to appear? Because I don't, I don't see slides at any rate.
They were appearing, I'm told earlier, but are they appearing now?
No, sir.
No, we can't see them.
No. Hey.
There might be a button, there should be a button at the bottom that says, does share screen.
All right, I'll go to it again.
There you go.
Great. We got it.
All right, so presumably you can see everything there. Sorry, I'll go back to my previous screen for our vision and purpose, connecting people to places. And you can see the bullet points that I just read. Okay, this is a graphic that I traditionally show at the first budget presentation meeting with the council. It gives you some context and history about Bloomington Transit in terms of our ridership. It's a key measuring stick for evaluating any transit system, I think. As you can see here, going back to 1984, our ridership grew almost year after year steadily, all the way to 2014, when we plateaued. From 2015 to 2018, our ridership has been slowly declining. And there's a number of reasons for that. I won't get into those reasons right now, but I will say that in 2019, we did enjoy about a 2% increase in our total ridership, the first increase since 2014. And incidentally, prior to the pandemic starting, as we started off 2020, our ridership was increasing over the first two months through February. We were up about 4.3% until the pandemic hit in March and we're now running about 40% of normal on a typical weekday. Another way to look at our ridership is ridership per capita, which is simply total ridership divided by the population of our community. And in this graphic, I'm showing the eight most prominent urban areas in Indiana and how we stack up on a ridership per capita basis. Bloomington has been the leader in this in recent years there. And the takeaway from this slide, I think, is the three leading communities are all college communities, Bloomington, Lafayette, and Muncie. And all three do a good job of serving their college constituencies and thus they have higher ridership per capita than some of the other cities. I'll talk about some of the key accomplishments since I was here a year ago. We completed our route optimization study last summer. And then we, in the fall of last year, we went into a public comment process to receive public comment on proposed service changes. We have had a number of important grant funding wins in the past year. And if you noticed on the front page of the Herald Times, on Monday this week, there was an article about us winning a $3.2 million competitive federal grant that will allow us to purchase four battery electric buses and charging stations for them, which we're excited about. Late last year, we also won a $1.1 million federal competitive grant to upgrade our fare collection technology. A couple of months ago, we won $149,000 competitive grant through NDOT federal funding that will allow us to improve a couple of important bus stops in our system. And then although it's not a grant funding win, we did win just recently a technical assistance project from the Community Transportation Association of America, which we're members of. And it represents small urban and rural transit systems. But to help us and provide us with technical assistance for making a transition to electric buses and also to help us develop and implement a pilot program on microtransit, which we have as part of our 2021 budget. In the past year, we've also awarded the award for the first two electric buses and charging stations. Those should be delivered in early 2021. I already mentioned that we had about a 2% ridership gain, which was a nice accomplishment for the last year in 2019. And we've made a couple of technology advancements with our bus cameras and vehicle tracking system over the past year to upgrade the, the technology and move to the next generation of technology. Here's a few of the key goals that we've included in the 2021 budget. First and foremost, recovering from the COVID-19 pandemic is at the top of our list. I will tell you, there's, there's no playbook. There's no past experience or game plan that we can fall back upon to navigate the recovery waters. All transit systems in the U.S. and across the world are dealing with this challenge. The keys for us for the moment include a number of strategies and including enhanced cleaning and disinfecting of our buses on a regular nightly basis. Providing masks to the public, that's something that we have learned in these last few weeks, especially with the advent of the local public health order that requires wearing masks. We have closed some of our public facilities, our downtown transit center, the indoor passenger waiting area is closed to the public since the start of the pandemic and as well as our Grimes Lane office here on where our operations and maintenance facility is located. We do expect, hopefully, some improvement in the coming months or the coming year with hopefully the arrival of a vaccine. And hopefully, as the population gains some herd immunity, things will begin to relax, hopefully. A project that we're looking at in 2021 is the implementation of service changes. We were originally planning to implement those in August of this year before the arrival of the pandemic. We have put that off indefinitely. Right now, we're probably targeting February of 2021, but ultimately, my board will have to wrestle with that policy decision in the fall of this year. As part of the service changes, we hope to launch a demonstration or pilot program for microtransit service. We have that included in the budget. I'll talk a little bit more about that later. We will begin the use of our first electric buses when they arrive in early 2021. And as part of the 2021 budget, we have the addition of three additional electric buses and charging stations. Another project that we have for 2021 is to do an engineering assessment of our electrical infrastructure here at Grimes Lane and what it would take to support charging additional electric buses in our fleet. And an important element of that infrastructure assessment will be evaluating the potential for solar panels here at Grimes Lane to assist in the charging of battery electric buses. And then I mentioned, we won a competitive NDOT grant to make some bus stop improvements to a couple of key stops. And I'll, I'll talk a little bit later on about where those stops are located. And then upgrading and replacing our fare collection technology. Again, we've won a competitive federal grant in excess of a million dollars. And we're really excited about that bringing us into the 21st century with, with this technology. So I'll give you the first snapshot of the proposed 2021 budget here. We are proposing an overall budget of $14,505,793. That is about a 3.8% increase compared to the approved 2020 budget, which was about 13.98 million. A couple of the key changes are in materials and supplies and services. We're showing a 13.47% decrease in materials and supplies overall. And that decrease is primarily being driven by a decrease in fuel costs that we project for 2021 compared to 2020. Fuel prices are down and in collaboration with Indiana University, who, whom we share our facility with here on Grimes Lane. We, over the years, have been able to lock in our diesel fuel prices for several months, sometimes a year or more in advance. And we have been able to lock in fuel prices for much of our diesel fuel for 2021 at a dollar 60 a gallon. And by comparison, in the 2020 budget, we had budgeted $2.43 a gallon. So we're gonna realize a savings of about $175,000 in the budget class two for materials and supplies as a result of lower fuel costs. Then in the services, we're showing about a 12.59% overall increase compared to the 2020 budget. A couple of key items are driving that. We have the demonstration of microtransit service that we're planning for 2021. We have about $250,000 budgeted for that pilot program. And we're looking forward to collaborating with the Community Transportation Association of America and the technical assistance project that they'll be assisting with us to help us develop and implement microtransit service. The other project, we have $100,000 budgeted in services for 2021 to do our engineering electrical infrastructure assessment. And again, an important element of that will be to look at the potential for using solar panels to assist in the charging of more electric buses at our Grimes Lane facility there. On the capital side of the budget, we're showing about a 7.98% increase in capital cost. That's been, being driven primarily by the $3.1 million that we have for three additional electric buses and charging stations. The $1.5 million project that we have for upgrading and enhancing the technology for our fare collection system there. We have some other smaller elements to the capital side that are traditionally in our budget each year, including about $213,000 for engine and transmission rebuilds. We have $50,000 budgeted for facility maintenance. And, and then lastly, about $75,000 for replacement of a couple of support vehicles in our fleet here. So again, an overall increase of 3.8% total budget of about 14.5 million compared to last year's budget of 13.98 million. Each year, I try to show a power, a pie chart similar to this that shows you the division of expenses. And in this year's budget, the two larger pie slices are our personnel at 42.6% and capital at 35.8%. They comprise about 78% of the total budget. The other two, 22% is divided between fuel and oil, parts and supplies and services. Where does the funding come from to support the Bloomington Transit budget? So I show this pie chart graphic. And I think the interesting takeaway from this is about 73% of our funding comes from federal and state sources. And that leaves about 27% of the budget that is being generated from local sources. And you can see those smaller pie charts that include a local property tax, IU revenues, other local taxes, including a local income tax, passenger fares, and miscellaneous. Some of the challenges that we will be facing in 2021 and beyond are the short and long-term impacts of COVID-19 and the impact that it is having on our ridership. And how quickly will our ridership recover from that? Next Monday starts the IU fall semester and we're very quickly going to find out what the impact is of the change in classes and how they're structured with many more classes being held online this, in the fall semester. And we'll, we'll very quickly find out how many students are using Bloomington Transit on a regular daily basis. Another challenge that we will have with 2021 and probably several years thereafter is stabilizing our revenue sources and what, what is going to become of some of our revenue sources. We have already learned from the state, from NDOT, that state funding for transit is going to be reduced about 13% in 2021 owing to the impacts on state general revenues there, which is where our public mass transit funds come from at the state. I can tell you that at least in the short term, for the next two to three years, I think we at Bloomington Transit are in good condition to weather at least the short-term impacts of the pandemic. We have a combined $18.7 million in reserves in CARES Act federal funding that we have received. And then also in federal formula carryover funding there. And that will, again, based on our best projections, get us at least through the first two or three years of the pandemic. Or the next two or three years going forward. Again, I mentioned, we are concerned about the impacts on IU enrollment and how that will affect our travel patterns. Again, we're about to find out starting next week. Then also looking ahead, how will state and local investment in transit continue? On the state advocacy front, again, we, we are expecting a 13% increase in state funding. How will that change as we go forward? There have been discussions in the past year about the possibility of a climate lift that might be, a portion of which could be used for expanding public transit service in our community. I know those conversations have taken a backseat in recent months with the onset of the pandemic. But we're hoping that those conversations will resume at some point and that there'll be some serious consideration given to using a climate lift to possibly expand public transportation and grow and improve service in our community. Lastly, one of the challenges that we're looking at is the federal investment in transit. And Congress is currently debating a new federal infrastructure bill for roads and highways as well as public transportation. And it seems to be stalled, at least for the moment, in Congress. But we are hopeful that Congress will see the wisdom in greater investment in public transportation. But that remains to be seen. So these are the challenges that we foresee going forward. Talk a little bit about some of the opportunities that we have before us. We are hoping to launch our new route network redesign. This will bring us much improved schedule reliability. And that is one of the most serious issues that we're dealing with the current network design. As the community has grown, as traffic congestion has grown in the community, it has impacted our ability for our routes and schedules to stay on time. And so much of the work that was done in our route optimization study and redesigning our network had that in mind with, with the goal of trying to improve reliability of our service. Also, a new hospital will be opening up in the coming months and next year. And an important element in our route network redesign was to provide service to the new hospital site. We're excited about that. Looking forward to doing that. As I mentioned earlier, in our 2021 budget, we have a microtransit demonstration budgeted at about $250,000. It's like what we call a mobility on-demand innovation that we're very interested in doing. Last year, we did apply for a, a federal mobility on-demand demonstration grant. That was one of the grant programs that we were not successful in winning. Nevertheless, again, we have included about $250,000 in the 2021 budget. Our primary interest in using microtransit right now at least is can we use microtransit in a way to provide service that is currently being provided with our fixed route system on weeknights later after nine o'clock? Typically, our ridership declines on weeknights after nine o'clock. The idea would be to use perhaps a more efficient mode such as microtransit to provide that service instead of using regular fixed route service. Development in the past year that has excited us a lot is, there have been several very large developments, apartment complex developments that have included conditions to privately fund transit service. Those developments won't open until 2022. But I, we think it has a lot of promise and application to future developments to have private funding for public transit service that can be used by the general public, not just the residents of these developments. We're also very interested in expanding local investment in transit. As I mentioned, the interest locally and a climate fund that could be used, perhaps a local income tax that could be used to expand and improve public transportation in our community. And again, we're hopeful that those conversations will resume soon. Then lastly, a great opportunity is before us in terms of alternative fuels. We're very interested in doing our part to shift our reliance on fossil fuels to more renewable sources of energy. Hence, our decisions to pursue electric buses. And again, we've won a couple of grants that will help us down, down the road towards transition in our fleet to electric, battery electric vehicles. I wanted to give you a quick snapshot of our budget comparison going back three years, the 2018, 2019, and 2020, and how that compares to the 2021 budget. As you can see, our budget has grown from about $11.1 million in 2018 to the proposed $14.5 million we have in 2021. So with that, I appreciate your attention tonight and I'm glad to entertain questions and comments that you may have at this time.
Thank you very much, Mr. May. Okay, so we will open up the council member questions. If you can, Mr. May, unshare your screen so I can just get a shot of everyone.
See if I can.
There you go. Okay. Okay, go ahead. Councilmember Stambler.
Thank you, Mr. May. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you especially for the update on federal and state monies. I'll have more to say on that during council comment. I'm particularly interested in what you shared about microtransit and the pilot we're doing next year. I know that in the district I represent, we have areas that are underserved and areas that are unserved. And I think microtransit could be pretty interesting. Could you, particularly for the benefit of the public, say more about what that looks like, what exactly that is? And any more details you could give us about the pilot and how that will work next year?
So microtransit, I guess the best way to describe it would be it's typically a smaller vehicle as opposed to the use of a full-size bus. It is typically an on-demand type service rather than having a fixed route, fixed schedule service. Microtransit would typically involve a smartphone application whereby you can call up a ride when you're ready to go. I guess I would compare it similar to Uber and Lyft where you, you have a smartphone and you, you make a request for service and then a vehicle will show up hopefully in, in the not-too-distant timeframe and, and pick you up and take you to where you're going there. If, if that, so, so similar to Uber and Lyft in, in many respects.
And anything you could share about what that will look like here in Bloomington next year? Do you know where it's gonna be piloted or have we not sorted that out yet?
Haven't sorted it out, but we're primarily looking at late weeknight service after 9:00 P.M. on designated routes. We do have routes that have higher productivity at night. And we will probably continue fixed route service on, on those routes that are performing well. But the routes where the productivity falls off to less than five to 10 passengers per hour are good candidates for microtransit and those are the are good candidates for micro transit and those are the ones that we're thinking about initially. Again, we will be using technical assistance from the Community Transportation Association of America. They'll provide us with some experts on this who can again, provide us with some wisdom and expertise to help plan and develop the program. And we will have a a good level of public input as we go through that development process so that we can get public input to help us as we develop the the pilot program.
Great. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Flaherty.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. May. I have a number of questions I'll be submitting in writing afterwards, but wanted to get to a couple tonight anyway. Specifically with salaries, I know we've heard in multiple presentations now that the city of Bloomington anyway is is tries to do two percent salary increases across the board for for civil employees, non-union employees. And I was wondering, couldn't quite tell for sure, looking at the the budget, what salary increases look like for, it seems like there are increases for the various types of employees at BT. But if you could speak to that and, you know, the percent increase we might see in different categories of employees. Also wondering if any employees are union, I did, I'm not aware, I guess, with BT. And then thirdly, well, I'll I'll stop there and ask the third one after you answer. Thanks.
You asked if any of our employees are union and yes, our drivers and maintenance staff, mechanics and service attendants are represented by an AFSMI local. And we have a collective bargaining agreement with AFSMI. And for all the positions that are included in the AFSMI bargaining unit, the raises vary by position, they vary from one and a half to two and a half percent for from two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty one. For the non-bargaining unit staff, we budgeted a two percent increase.
Okay, thank you. And the third salary related question had to do with driver recruitment and retention and wondering how salaries are impacting that issue for you all and if if it's going all right.
It is a critical issue for us, primarily on the driver recruitment side. We continue to be critically shorthanded. That's not unusual for public transit system. Most transit systems across the country are struggling with recruiting drivers and we are certainly going through that. There's a number of reasons for that. There, first of all, there's a nationwide shortage of commercial driver, CDL qualified drivers there. In recent years, the CDL medical requirements to hold a commercial driver's license have been tightened. There's a number of medical conditions that will disqualify people from holding a CDL, things like blood pressure, certain heart conditions and certain diabetic conditions can disqualify for people. In addition, we are under the federal drug and alcohol testing requirements, so employees are subject to pre-employment, random testing, post-accident testing, and that includes marijuana. And given in recent years, there has been a relaxation of marijuana laws across the country and more and more transit systems are struggling to deal with that as qualified applicants sometimes have difficulty passing the drug and alcohol testing requirements. Also, on the CDL, there is a minimum age, you have to be twenty one years old to hold a CDL. So the folks in the eighteen to twenty range typically are not qualified. At Bloomington Transit, one of the issues that we have experienced in recent years is the baby boomer retirement that is ongoing and we're in the midst of right now. But we have had quite a number of drivers retire in recent years.
And thank you, Mr. May. I I think we're out of time on my question around, but I appreciate the answer. And when I follow up via email, if there's any more to go over on that front, I'll ask. Appreciate it.
I hadn't planned to interrupt and answer. Okay, Councilmember Piedmont Smith, I think you are next with a question.
Yes, thank you. Always good to get an update on Bloomington Transit and exciting to hear about the grants. So I wanted to follow up on Councilmember Flaherty's question about salaries. So did you say that raises vary from one to two point five percent? Did I hear that right?
Actually, for the bargaining unit for the for the union employees, it's one and a half to two and a half percent depending on the position. And then the non-bargaining unit employees, we budgeted a two percent increase.
And are both the mechanics and the drivers in Ask Me or are they different unions?
Same unions.
All in Ask Me, okay. All right, well, that's one point five percent is not really keeping up with things, but if that's the union agreement, that's that's fine. That was my only question. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Hi, Mr. May. Thank you very much for the presentation. Will you say a little bit about IU kicks in about nine point two percent? Tell me what that, what does that mean to me and and to the general public? And how is that nine point two percent determined?
Well, there there are several ways that IU contributes to the operation of the transit system. First and foremost, they collect a student transportation fee from students. And that revenue generates several million dollars for the university. Most of that revenue goes to fund their own IU campus bus service. But Bloomington Transit receives about just a little over a million dollars a year. And for that funding, we provide students with universal access to our fixed route bus system. So students simply show their student ID card or their Crimson card and they're able to ride any Bloomington Transit route at no charge. There are other ways that the university contributes to the transit system. They do have an employee pass program for all their employees and they have several thousand employees there. And employees can use their Crimson card, just like students can, to ride any Bloomington Transit bus at no charge. The we collect a little over a hundred thousand dollars a year. It's on a per head charge. And again, roughly about a hundred thousand dollars a year, maybe a little more, maybe closer to a hundred and fifty thousand. I'll have to check the number exactly. Lastly, we share a joint operating facility with IU Campus Bus here on Grimes Lane. And it's a unique arrangement whereby Bloomington Transit owns the buildings and facilities here and the university owns the land. We share in the operating expenses of this facility fifty fifty with the university. And and they pay us for that. That's reflected in some of those IU revenues that are shown in our budget.
That's part of that nine point two percent?
Correct. Those are the three things, those are the three things that make up that nine point two percent.
So of of the operating budget, does that for a layperson who's not in transportation, does that is that a fair compensation for the services they receive from Bloomington Transit?
We believe it is, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council member question from Mr. May? Okay, I have a couple of quick questions, Mr. May. What percentage of capital expenses are covered by grants?
What percentage of, what was that?
Capital expenses, I think, right part, you're, yeah.
Okay. Typically, typically, it's in the range of seventy five to eighty percent. So depends on the grant. For example, in the fare collection technology, the federal share is seventy five percent. I believe all the other grants are eighty percent.
Okay, thank you. And I know this is a weird time with the pandemic and everything. Are we giving free rides during the pandemic?
We continue to operate fare free and have done so since the start of the pandemic in mid-March. And we're evaluating it on a month to month basis, but for the moment, we continue to run fare free.
Gotcha. I know we just, you you said you just won that like one point one million dollar grant for fare collection technology. Have you considered going fare free in like in the future, just across the board?
Yeah, over the years, there's been a lot of discussion about that, especially at council budget meetings, just like this one. We're very open to the possibility of going fare free. All we need is for somebody to step to the plate and provide the funding that to replace the funding that we would lose. And we would also need the university to stay in with their contribution. That's, I don't want to overlook, that's an important point. The university is contributing over a million dollars to pay for student fares and they're contributing more than a hundred thousand dollars to pay for employee fares. If we go fare free, we would need the university to continue that contribution. Then lastly, I don't want to overlook this point either. If we go fare free, our BT access service for people with disabilities would also need to be free. And that is an expensive service for us to provide. The cost per trip ranges somewhere between fifteen and twenty dollars for every trip. If you eliminate the fare for that, currently it has a two dollar fare per trip. So that that has some ability to control the amount of demand that we get for that service. If you eliminate that fare, there would be no disincentives to use that service and our demand could increase greatly. And thus, our cost would increase greatly for that service. So we would have to account for that and and identify a way to compensate for for those increased costs for what is likely to be greatly increased BT access ridership.
Okay, thank you. My other question is I'll follow up with email. Any other council member question? No, okay. Okay, I think now we can move to public comment for Bloomington Transit. Oh, yes.
May I, may I ask a follow up question? I'm sorry.
Sorry, I didn't see your hand.
It was late.
Okay.
Thank you. I just want to make sure I understand the contributions from IU. So when I look at your revenues budget, the IU contract revenue, about one point two million, is that? What does that cover? And then there's another line that's a hundred forty thousand for IU reimbursements.
So the one point two million dollars is IU contract revenue. That is primarily student transportation revenue, is that? And then in addition, they pay us for the joint operating expenses that that we incur here at the Grimes Lane facility as part of that. Is that part of the IU reimbursements? Okay, so that that it includes the student transportation fare revenue as well as the joint operating expenses here at Grimes Lane.
But I mean, which is which? So the one point two million is called an IU contract and then there's a hundred forty thousand, that's a reimbursement from IU. So I'm trying to understand what the difference is there.
The one point two four million dollars is student fare revenue and the operating joint operating cost combined for the Grimes Lane facility here. The ninety five thousand dollar that number there that shows for IU reimbursements is I'm sorry.
And that's the one that increases to one hundred forty K.
Decrease.
Increases from ninety five thousand to a hundred forty thousand. Oh, I'm sorry, I am, I'm
Decrease.
I'm so used to looking at the old budget in one column and then the new one, but you're right, decreases, sorry.
So so just to clarify, the ninety five thousand, one hundred dollars is the IU share of the joint operating expenses here. The one point two million dollars is student transportation revenue and and bus wash expenses. So what we do with the university is we use our maintenance crew to wash and clean and fuel their fleet of vehicles. So they pay us for their proportionate share of those costs to use our staff to clean, wash and fuel their vehicles. So those are combined. You have you have two items there. You have student transportation fee revenues and you have the their share of the bus wash and fueling cost.
Okay, and IU has has agreed to maintain the the one point two million for next year.
Actually, IU has not agreed to do that. We're currently operating under an interim agreement. The university wants to see how many students are going to be returning and they won't know that number until next week. So we've agreed to postpone negotiations until they have a better handle on the final number of students that that show up there. In the meantime, we've asked them to give us thirty five days advance notice if they are going to reduce the amount of contribution that they make to Bloomington Transit.
Thank you, Mr. May, for that answer.
Sorry.
Thank you.
People are making me sick at the time. I want to blame the others. Okay, Councilmember Flaherty, did you have a follow up question?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, following up on this idea or this this topic a bit. First of all, do you know? Do you have any estimate of roughly what percentage of ridership is made up by the student population?
I think most recent numbers are around sixty eight percent.
Okay. And do you know roughly what the breakdown of that one point two million is between the, you know, right, you know, free ridership for students versus the services you provide them?
It's approximately one point one million for student transportation revenue and a hundred thousand for bus wash expenses.
Okay. I think that's it. Thanks.
Any other council members have a second round question? Okay, so at this time, we can move to public comment. Just to review that, anyone wishing to speak can hit the right hand button at the bottom of your screen. Clerk Bolden will be managing this for us today while we will tackle it together. You have two minutes to speak. I'll, we have the speaker timer going and then I'll also let you know when two minutes has passed and at that time, we'd like you to wrap up. And at two ten, we will mute mute you so we can just, you know, keep to our tight schedule tonight. Okay, so so far, if Clerk Bolden, if you want to go ahead and.
So far, it looks like we have a comment from Mary Morgan. And Ms. Morgan, if you would like to unmute, go ahead.
Great, thank you. I'm Mary Morgan with the Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. I have a question and a comment. The question is, and I may have missed this in the presentation, I'm interested in knowing whether BT is all in for electric or whether compressed natural gas is still in the mix as a fuel source. And my comment is really just to thank Mr. May for extending his contract another year. And we, as a community, were really on a path to significantly expand and strengthen the bus system under Mr. May's leadership and obviously the pandemic has derailed that, but hopefully we can get back to that at some point. I think the fact that BT is in a really solid financial situation is due to Mr. May's fiscal stewardship, which has been critical and will be critical in the coming years. And I just wanted to say that we really appreciate your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? I think that's all we have for now. Okay. Okay, so now we'll move back to council members for further questions and comments. Anything for Mr. May. Right, okay. Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, Mr. May, would you be so kind as to answer Ms. Morgan's question about the CNG fuel?
Yes, thank you. We we have not ruled CNG out. We know the city city is still involved in a waste energy study. And if that study were to come back and recommend the implementation of an inter aerobic digester on the wastewater treatment plant and if it makes financial sense, there's no reason why we couldn't do a mix of CNG and battery electric buses. The the most challenging factor that would go with that is having the physical space at our Grimes Lane operation here. We would have to have a compressed natural gas fueling station, which takes up a pretty significant amount of acreage or space and we're we're very limited in the footprint that we have here. That's not to say we couldn't acquire some adjacent property, that that might be a possibility. We may have to even do that for electric technology pending the outcome of our infrastructure assessment. We're going to need space for charging stations. Again, we're very limited. The transit system has grown fairly significantly in the last twenty years since our facility was built here on Grimes Lane. And so, again, I guess to answer the question, we haven't rolled out CNG. It's still feasible if it makes financial sense.
Wonderful, thanks. Thank you very much. Other council member comment or question here? Okay. I think now we can have Clerk Bolden call roll for a straw poll vote for do pass recommendation. Yes, council member Flaherty?
Just a point of order, I wanted to clear, sorry, maybe you said questions or comment. Did you, okay, I missed that.
Do you want, do you have a comment?
I'm all right. I'll forego the comment, sorry. I was distracted for a moment.
I just combined them because it was kind of quiet the first round, so. Okay. Okay, I think we're ready.
Okay. I'm not sure if council member Rallo can hear me or not.
I believe he's called in and.
Right.
I believe I've unmuted him, although I'm not sure if he can.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and skip him for now. We'll come back to him in a couple of seconds if he gets unmuted and go on to council member Scambalory.
Yes.
Rosenberger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Bowling?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
And council member Rallo?
I'm not sure if he's able to connect to the audio.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'll leave it up to you if you just want to go ahead and move on from here.
I think we can move on.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, thanks for that. So next presentation, we have Bloomington Housing Authority. That, we have Amber Scobie presenting the executive director.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Scobie, if you are ready, if you have a presentation, you can share your screen with us. And then there's a timer going that you can check in on, and go ahead when you're ready.
Okay. Great, just to confirm that you can see the slides?
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, awesome, great. I'm Amber Scobie, the executive director of the Bloomington Housing Authority. Thanks for allowing me this opportunity to let you know how things are going here at the Housing Authority and give you a snapshot of what our fiscal year 2021 budget will look like. Just a reminder that this is informational only. The Bloomington Housing Authority Board of Commissioners will approve this budget formally during their September 17th meeting. And you guys are all invited to attend that if you'd like. Just a reminder about our mission statement and why we exist. So our mission is that we strengthen opportunity, beginning but not ending with housing. We are a public housing authority, and we primarily manage federal funding from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development to administer these federal programs at a local level. Those programs look like this. We have 312 units that we own and operate through Crestmont, Reverend Butler, and Walnut Woods. So we have two different types of affordable housing communities now. We have 196 units that are traditional public housing. And because of our RAD conversion, we have 116 units that are now project based Section 8 through the RAD program, and those are undergoing renovation right now. We have almost 1,300 or over 1,300 vouchers, 1,284 regular Section 8 vouchers, and then special voucher program types, helping anywhere from homeless veterans, mentally ill, and project basing vouchers. Another key component that we offer is supportive service programs through our family self sufficiency program, a home ownership program, and a resident opportunity and self sufficiency program, which is supportive services for our public housing families. We also have a Head Start facility at our Walnut Woods location and offer community building and community spaces throughout the properties that we own. So 2020 highlights, we had 98% occupancy in our public housing program. Slight increase from 2019, 99% utilization for our voucher program, 2% increase from 2019. We closed a RAD deal in May, which was 17.8 million dollars in investments. We fully renovated Reverend Butler and Walnut Woods. We had 10 graduates of our family self sufficiency program, 99 participants in our ROS program. We did a project thanks to some CDVG funding from the city. Wheelchair accessibility for three of our one bedroom buildings in Reverend Butler, and some sidewalk improvements for wheelchair accessibility in Walnut Woods. And overall, we had 10.4 million dollars in federal subsidy coming in from HUD to help provide housing opportunities and self sufficiency programs here in Monroe County. So our broad goals for fiscal year 2021, just a reminder, the Housing Authority, our fiscal year starts October 1st and ends September 30th. So we did receive some CARES funding from the federal governments, about half a million dollars worth. So we've spent some of it, but it will continue into 2021. So we want to use that money wisely to promote business continuity, voucher utilization, and ensure client health and safety the most that we can. We're also working on a RAD conversion for Crestmont. So we're starting the predevelopment work and figuring out the financing for those 196 units. We do expect an inspection from HUD REAC. So HUD Real Estate Assessment Center, they come to inspect to ensure that we're offering safe decent sanitary housing. So we do expect them to come and will want to address any physical improvements that might impact health and safety. So we have a good score on that inspection. And then we're also looking to expand our project based voucher program. Currently, we have 45 vouchers, and we're looking to expand to at least 125 vouchers that will directly assist units in six new construction projects, some of which are deeply affordable and tax credit projects that you have approved in the past. So I'm digging into the actual budget piece. This is a snapshot of our operating income and operating expenses for the public housing program. So operating income primarily comes from the tenant rent collected. And we also collect fees for additional utilities, maintenance fees, those types of things. And a large portion of this budget also comes from operating subsidy. So this is money that we get from HUD to operate our programs because we offer affordable rents. So we expect to receive about 752,936 in operating subsidy. Also receive some resident services grants, and then about 122 dollars in the CARES Act funding for this fiscal year as well. So about a 1.6 million in terms of operating income for Crestmont. On the expenses side, administrative costs, about 466,000. This is staff salaries, benefits, office overhead, staff training and fees that the program pays to the cost center for management and accounting. We have tenant services expenses. We pay the utilities for tenant, those expenses, maintenance, insurance. And we do expect to spend all the CARES Act money for COVID expenses. So total expenses about 1.5 million. We do expect to have a cash flow of about 69,000 for Crestmont. This is the Housing Choice Voucher Section 8 budgets. It's the largest one that we have from a funding standpoint. It's a huge economic boost to participating landlords in Monroe County. Biggest piece is the housing assistance payments. That's what we pay on behalf of families to property owners that participate in our program. We expect to get 8.5 million this year. We did apply for some additional CARES Act money that we just found out we were eligible for. So we hope to add to this. But again, we just submitted the application yesterday and hope to hear back soon. We get funding for our FSS program, administrative fees, about 709,000, some fraud recovery money, and CARES Act funding for the voucher program is about 307,000 for this fiscal year. Expenses, we fully expect to pay all HAP money, maybe even a little bit more. Administrative expenses about 587,000, put the COVID expenses in as well as the supportive services, cost of fuel for the inspection, insurance, those types of things. So we do have a pretty strong cash flow expected for the voucher program as well. The last budget to share with you tonight is the Central Office Cost Center. This is the key executive and accounting function of the Housing Authority. I am an employee of the Cost Center. We have broad oversight functions. The programs pay these fees to us, and the money is de-federalized, and we can help support operations. So we expect to get 654,000 or so in operating income and expenses of about 621,000. So that concludes the brief budget presentation. And I wanted to sneak in these photos, some updates in Walnut Woods and Reverend Butler for the renovation work that's taking place. It's still a bit of a construction zone, but wanted to show you some of the flooring that we're installing. It's a great laminate vinyl tile product. You can see some of the new kitchen cabinets that are going in at Walnut Woods, some of the paint colors for the, for the doors and the walls, bathroom flooring. And then the picture on the far left is the ramp project and front decks that the CDVG program has supported. And this will add wheelchair accessibility to buildings in Reverend Butler. So that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to help answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Ms. Scobie. Okay, if you just want to, yep, got it. Okay, council member question for Ms. Scobie? Council member Piedmont Smith?
Yes, thank you so much for the presentation and for all your good work for the community. My question, well, I have two questions. I think they're both, well, let me go with a short one first. What is the salary increase that you've budgeted for your administrative staff?
We've done a cost of living increase about 2% so far. And then we plan on doing some bonuses just to help cover some expenses with staff working from home using some equipment that they, you know, personally own, internets, phones, those types of things. So it allows us to help cover those costs as well.
Thank you. And then my other question is, is it difficult to get landlords to participate in the Housing Choice Voucher Program? Do you have enough landlords participating?
No, we don't have enough landlords. We are always looking to recruit landlords. We have all different types from larger multifamily complexes, some of the tax credit properties that have been approved here in the past couple of years. We've had great success partnering with them, and some of them have been accepting our vouchers. But we're always looking for smaller landlords and, you know, folks who are in areas that aren't sort of concentrated voucher areas. So, you know, we'd love to have landlords that are focused more on the east side or closer to job centers. I know one of the biggest struggles is just the amounts of subsidy that the voucher can bring with it. And those are set by HUD. We have some flexibility, but not a ton. So, you know, I think overall, a big policy change in terms of being able to offer more on that payment standard would go a long way.
So the landlord can only charge a certain amount in rent? Like, there's a limit on how much? I, I know the tenant has a voucher to cover a certain amount, but is, so that's limited? Is that part of the problem?
Yes. Yeah, to simply say that we can only pay a voucher assistance up to the payment standard. And those payment standards are based off of fair market rents. And some landlords charge higher fair market rents than what we can pay because they feel they might be in a better location or offer some, you know, rich amenities, those types of things. And other landlords are under the payment standards. It just kind of really depends on the, the property.
Thank you.
Council member Volin?
Yeah, I just have one brief question. Can you give us a, a rough understanding of how many people are housed by Bloomington Housing Authority?
Um, so we have 312 units that we own and operate. And typically, that's about 675 people total in all those households. And then the voucher program is over, you know, about 1,300 vouchers. An average family size is 2.3. So do the math on that one. It might be, what, 27? Yeah.
3,000 people.
Yeah.
Yeah. So 30, approximately 3,700 people in the city of Bloomington are somehow either directly or indirectly housed by VHA.
Yes.
Is that unusual for an Indiana city? That proportion, like, that's roughly 3% to 4% of the population of the city? Is that high or low? Do you know?
Um, I would say it's about average for our size. I mean, comparing it to Indianapolis isn't necessarily fair because it's such a larger city. But I would say it's, you know, on track for a medium sized city in the Midwest.
Okay, thank you.
Council member Sandberg?
Thank you. First of all, Ms. Scobie, thank you so much. We always appreciate your updates. My question has to do with the COVID pandemic and what that has done to many of your tenants. I know you have some COVID related expenses there. But if you could give us a general overview of, are there more that need assistance? Rent assistance due to loss of, of employment?
Sure, I'll start with the voucher program. So we did open up the waitlist, I believe it was at the end of March, and kept it open for several weeks. And we received about 1,200 applications to add to the 500 we already had on that waitlist. So our voucher waitlist is about 1,700 strong. Our voucher families, we did see families come in and report a job loss or a drop of income. And it was a lot of work on our staff to quickly process those because the sooner we process them, the sooner that client's rent goes down and the additional subsidy kicks in. We are paying a lot more in HAP than we would in non pandemic times. It's really stretching our funding, hence our application for additional CARES Act funding. It was about, you know, 40 to 60 dollars per unit month. So that's pretty significant, so really stretching those resources. But I will say vouchers are fantastic and should be available to anyone that needs rent assistance without much, you know, administrative burden. How great would that be if we had vouchers for everyone that was having a drop of income or needed some rental assistance right now? So really proud of the stability that that program could offer folks who were already on it, but not helping so much, those waitlist folks. For our public housing program and our RAD, we didn't see as much income change. But again, we, we were processing those because of, you know, reduced work hours. because of, you know, reduced work hours, job loss, what have you. We aren't collecting as much rent, but we are doing some additional outreach to those families, make sure they have access to resources. Most of the amounts are fairly small, so hopefully now that this eviction moratorium has ended, we are working with them, getting them the resources they need. And then in a month, we'll reevaluate everything and hopefully in a much better place.
Great. Thank you very much for.
Council member Flaherty?
Thank you so much for the presentation, Ms. Goby. I had a few questions related to the RAD program that I know we heard a bit about earlier this year, and just trying to refresh my memory as well. So Walnut Woods and, sorry, what's the other property if it is?
Reverend E.D. Butler.
Right. And those will become sort of like permanent housing choice voucher locations. Is that right? That's what the RAD program does?
Yeah, it will be for at least forty years permanently affordable assisted by the voucher subsidy.
Okay, and what about the public housing that we still own? Is there anticipation, I think, and again, I think we probably discussed this four or five months ago, to convert to RAD eventually? Or what's the timeline of that, if yes?
It is yes. We do plan to do a full conversion of our portfolio. It's the only way that we can get the capital that we need to make the critical repairs. And the timeline on that is we had our development team on site two weeks ago, and architects and our financing experts are working right now on what that deal will look like. We are waiting for IHTDA to open up the round for tax credits, so they have closed that because of just some capacity and the pandemic. So when they open that up, we will be applying and very optimistic. Hopefully, we have everything lined up with financing. You guys approve our bonds again, and we are closing that deal in about a year, maybe eighteen months.
Okay, thank you.
Other council members?
Thank you, Chairman Rosenberger. Thank you, Ms. Goby, for that presentation. I also want to thank you and your board for all the good things that we're doing in this community and how we're helping everyone. So I, for one, know how hard and how important your board members are, so just want to acknowledge them as well. When you were discussing your central office cost center, and you used a term, I believe it was under the income part, but you used a term that I'm not familiar with, and you said "de-federalized funds." What does that term mean?
It might be a HUD or Housing Authority-specific term, but it basically means that that money is able to be spent on things outside of the specific program requirements. So like Section Eight money, there's lots of rules on how you spend it. You can't spend it on, you know, a pizza party for the staff or just things that businesses do outside of normal operations, right? So by de-federalizing the money, it creates some flexibility, so we can do those minor things. That's a very simple example, but also we can, you know, do things like start a nonprofit that does housing development with that money. You know, we can, we can use it to fit local need a lot easier than following the strict HUD rules.
Okay, thank you. I learned something tonight. I hadn't heard that term before, so thank you very much. My last question, and I do believe, and you might have to refresh my memory, with regard to the RAD conversion, when we talked about this months ago, from the contractor standpoint, and I think we talked about being able to utilize population members that come from a lower socioeconomic level, maybe even some minority or women own businesses or services. And correct me if I'm wrong about any of that. It's been a while. But I guess my question is, is that the case, and how is that progressing, and how are we doing in that area?
Okay, good question. I'm glad that you asked this. We did talk about spending the almost seven million dollars we're investing directly into renovations, promoting that to women, minority businesses, and also Section Three businesses. Section Three businesses are those where a lot of the employees or the owner are themselves low-income. So we've done two pay applications, meaning we've paid our contractors twice now. And I'm proud to report that on the first round, twenty-five percent of the money went to women, minority, and Section Three businesses. Yeah.
Ms. Goby, I may follow up later. I'm sorry, we're out of time. Thank you.
Other council member questions? Anyone would like to go to round two if you'd ask a question about it? Yes, council member Smith?
Thank you. I'd like for Ms. Goby to continue that, please. Thank you.
The first round, twenty-five percent of the funding that we paid out, so what we paid for the subcontractors went to women, minority, and Section Three businesses. And this last round that we paid out two weeks ago, twenty-seven percent of the funding went out to women, minority, Section Three businesses. So we had an internal goal of twenty-five percent, and we've been hitting that. And we think it'll increase based on the businesses and the subcontractors that have been interested in bidding on future work.
Okay, thank you very much. I've been hearing really good things about that program and some of the more positive things we're being able to do with some of our own community members. So thank you very much for that.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions for Ms. Goby before we open up to public comment? Council member Smith?
Thank you for your presentation, Ms. Goby. I just wondered, can you comment about the, how does the Bloomington Housing Authority deal with the elderly population? Is there any, is there any focus? Is there any programs that touch on the elderly population?
Sure. Most of those programs are with those living in public housing or RAD units. I believe we probably have around thirty percent that are elderly and disabled. We have our resident service coordinator. They do work with partner agencies such as Area 10 to offer some specific services and activities. We have a senior meal. Right now, it's suspended because they did like a congregate gathering senior meal. We've been really touching base with them via phone, knocking on their door, checking in on them, making sure they're okay. They have basics, food, medicine, hygiene, cleaning supplies, things like that during this pandemic. And then, you know, I think overall, the seniors themselves, they're a pretty tight-knit community, and they look out for one another a lot.
Do you get any special funding from the feds that is targeted towards elderly population?
We do not, just because we do not have any designated senior housing. Technically, our housing is categorized as family and not senior, so we don't qualify for that specific senior funding.
Okay, thank you, and I appreciate all you do. So thanks a lot.
Thank you. Any other council member question? Okay, at this time, we can move to public comment. So if anyone would like to comment, just raise your hand.
Hey, it looks like we have Greg Alexander. Mr. Alexander, if you'd like to go ahead, you can speak for two minutes.
Hi, thanks. I'm Greg Alexander. I just want to draw your attention to, I mean, I support all that VHA does. There's a lot of housing in and near my neighborhood that's subsidized through their programs. I really appreciate that. I just want to bring to your attention that people who live in subsidized housing, who rely on assistance just to pay their rent, have a very hard time with car ownership, have a very hard time when their car breaks down. And if you look at the people who ride the bus, even though the bus isn't really all that great, that's people who don't have a lot of money. You know, if you look at people who walk on Third Street because the sidewalks are covered in snow to a foot and a half that has been put there by snowplows, that's, that's poor people. That's not, you know, I'm a jerk. I do that because of a kind of a personality defect that I have. But that's people that live in public housing. So all through the city, when, when we have sidewalks that are missing, when we have sidewalks that are blocked, when we have sidewalks that are inaccessible, people use that, those sidewalks, and they're walking in the street because the sidewalk isn't there, and that's mostly poor people. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other comments? Chris Baldwin?
I do not see any other comments. No.
Okay. Okay, we'll go back to any further questions from Ms. Goby from council members? Any final comment? Okay, I don't see anyone raising hands. Okay, so thank you so much, Ms. Goby, for your presentation. Always wonderful to hear from you.
Thanks, everyone.
See what you're up to. Thank you. Okay, up next, we have Housing and Neighborhood Development.
Point of order? Don't we need to have a straw vote?
We don't vote on Bloomington Housing Authority. That, their board votes for their budget.
I see. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything, anything I can do. Okay, so up next is Housing and Neighborhood Development with a fifteen-minute presentation. Director Doris Sims, welcome tonight, and you may begin whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Good evening. I am Doris Sims, the Director of the Housing and Neighborhood Development Department, and I will be presenting the 2021 budget for the Hand Department. Why we exist, the Housing and Neighborhood Development Department's mission is to enhance the quality of life for Bloomington residents by developing programs, services, and partnerships with both public and private organizations to preserve community character, promote safe and affordable housing, and protect neighborhood vitality. The Hand Department has seventeen staff members, six compliance officers, five program managers, three housing specialists, one financial specialist, an assistant director, and a director. And I'd like to thank all of my staff members because I feel that they are the ones who run the Hand Department and make me look good on a daily basis. So thank you to my staff. The department implements over thirty activities and programs and provides staff assistance to four boards and commissions, the Redevelopment Commission, the Historic Preservation Commission, the Board of Housing Quality Appeals, and the Citizens Advisory Committee, which is the committee which allocates our annual CDBG funds. Our programmed activities are grouped under five general fund categories: Affordable Housing, Neighborhood and Citizens Involvement, Title Sixteen and Title Six, Historic Preservation, as well as we administer three federal grant programs of the Department of Housing and Urban Development, the Community Development Block Grant Program or CDBG, the Home Partnership Grant, and the Housing Counseling Grant. The department also oversees the grant administration of the Jack Hopkins Funds for the Common Council. As many city departments, the Hand Department had to postpone or cancel several department activities and programs due to the coronavirus pandemic. Some of the activities included our annual celebration of neighborhoods, which would have taken place in June during the farmer's market. Events celebrating Historic Preservation Month in May, which included lectures and a trivia fun contest, also had to be canceled. We postponed rental inspections programs, rental inspections back in March and resumed them in mid-May. We continued to work with landlords and tenants who are concerned about the virus to either postpone inspections to another day or to do viral walkthrough inspections with the tenant. We moved all our boards and commission meetings to Zoom, and we learned along with our board members on how to operate this new meeting platform. We have also moved to our most popular events, Citizens Academy and Home Buyers Class, to a combination of a virtual and distant in-person learning platform. Some of our accomplishments today include assisting with the creation and retention of ninety-seven units of affordable housing. We also have awarded four neighborhood grants, one to Park Ridge East for improvements to the neighborhood park, one to Prospect Hill for signage into Rose Hill Cemetery, one to Bloomington Housing Authority for two information kiosks within their residential neighborhoods, and one to Grandville Hills for education on invasive plants and native plant distribution. We also provided assistance to the Near West Side on the process to become a historic district. Under Title Six, we met our goal to resolve ninety-two percent of valid complaints that we received in U-Report, and we provided individual counseling services to seventy-three clients. Under the Community Development Block Grant Program, we worked with the Planning and Transportation Department on the Fifth Third Adams Project Improvement by paying for the sidewalks that were put in as part of that development. And now I will provide you information on our 2021 budget goals and our requested funding. One of the most important goals of the Hand Department is to work to increase the amount of affordable housing for all income levels within the Bloomington community. Our goal for 2021 is to continue to work with the Directors of Planning and Transportation Department as well as the Economic Development Department to offer incentives, incentives, excuse me, to create or maintain one hundred units of affordable housing. We also will continue to monitor over the eight hundred units of affordable rental housing that has been added or maintained during Mayor Hamilton's administration. We will report to the mayor and the common council any expenses that will take place under the Housing Development Fund by the end of the third quarter in 2021. And we will provide ongoing awareness of the Recover Forward Down Payment Insured Equity Law Program to first-time home buyers to improve economic wealth among Bloomington residents. Under Neighborhood and Citizens Involvement, for 2021, we will evaluate how to continue to offer our neighborhood cleanups while maintaining social distancing for participants as well as our staff. We will also continue to offer our Citizens Academy class, which begins next week, to offer it in a combination of virtual meeting as well as in-person socially distancing. And we look to improve our class satisfaction rating from, of two, four point seven, four point seven out of a rating of five. And one thing that our new neighborhood program manager looks to do is to get students more involved and more engaged within their respective neighborhoods. So stay tuned. We'll report back next year on how we've been able to accomplish that. Under Title Six, ten our rental inspection program. This past year, we have turned our efforts to maximizing efficiencies in the rental inspection program by decreasing the amount of time it takes to complete inspections by five percent by utilizing iPads. We will continue to track the time it takes to complete the inspections in order to continue to have efficiencies with our rental inspection process. We also will be looking to educate both tenants and landlords on smoke detector maintenance. Smoke detector violations, one of the highest violations found during rental inspections. This was a program that we had hoped to offer this year. However, with COVID, we are reevaluating how to deliver this information. One of the ways that we have been communicating with landlords through is through our Pulse newsletter. We hope to continue this communication and increase the publication to at least four times per year. Under Historic Preservation for 2021, the department will increase by twenty percent the number of participants at our Historic Preservation Workshops and Seminars. We also will look to provide education to the public on the updated State Historical, Architectural, and Archaeological Research Data Survey, known as the SHARD. Through mailings and virtual meetings, information will be provided on what is the SHARD and what properties are included in the updated survey. We'll also be working on design guidelines for Restaurant Row Historic District. Under Title Six Neighborhood Compliance, the department investigates and resolves citizens' complaints under those sections of Title Six as it relates to tile, grass, trash, and snow removal. Our goal for 2021 is to maintain an average response time of three days to U-Report complaints that are submitted. complaints that are submitted. We also look to resolve 94% this year of the, of next year of the U report complaints that are valid. And we also will be developing an email survey that will be sent out randomly to get feedback on how our reports are handled. Now I would like to provide you some information on our nine general fund programs that we administer. Our HUD funded programs are a different fiscal year than the general fund. Our CDBG and our home program are on a June 1st to May 31st fiscal year. And our Housing Counseling Grant is on an October through September fiscal year. Under Housing Counseling, the department will continue, the department provides one-on-one counseling in the areas of pre and post purchase, mortgage default delinquency, and rental housing counseling. The department hosts four classes per year for individuals and households looking to purchase their first home and learn about the home buying process. In 2021, we hope to have 80 households attend our home buyers classes, which we will be offered, be offering totally virtually. We'll also will be developing a follow-up survey that we will be sending to past class participants to see how many have actually become homeowners. And we also look to provide 62 households with one-on-one counseling assistance. In the community development process, 50% of our grant funding can be used to fund social service agencies. This past year, we have allocated funding to six agencies, and we hope to monitor those agencies for federal compliance and utilization of their funding. Under the physical improvement goals under the block grant program, we hope to partner again with Planning and Transportation to provide accessible sidewalks on 14th Street between Madison and Woodburn. We also will be partnering with Mother Hubbard's Cover to provide facility improvements to their office space. And we will assist Habitat for Humanity with infrastructure improvements for their old sage housing development. Under the home program during 2021, the department will be providing up to $50,000 per unit to develop 20 affordable rental housing units. We also will be partnering with the Bloomington Housing Authority to provide assistance for one year for four households who are on their waitlist for providing them rental assistance. And we will continue our down payment and closing cost assistance program and hope to provide two households with down payment assistance to purchase their first home. This past year, the common council awarded 27 agencies funding under the Jack Hopkins Program. Our goal is to close out 90% of those funding agreements by the end of the year. One of my biggest budget highlights is in the category four. I decreased that line out by 50,000 or 100%. The funding that was used this past year under category four, four was to use to purchase two new fleet vehicles for inspectors. We had two fleet vehicles that was experiencing problems with water filtration that was causing mold in the vehicles. We have received our new vehicles. I'm happy to report this week. So this is a budget summary overall of the Hand Department budget, which is $2,747,709. A decrease, I might add, of $26,017 are a net, I decreased my budget from 2020 to 2021 by 1%. In category one, there's a 2% increase, which is the 2% increase for all Hand Department staff for 2021. By category two, I was able to decrease it by $712. By category three, by $219, as I stated, the category four capital outlay by $50,000 to have a negative decrease and a negative 1% budget. Yoohoo! Thank you for your consideration of the Hand Department's 2021 budget request, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much, Ms. Sims. Right now, we'll go to council members, Councilmember Sims.
Thank you. Make sure I'm unmuted. As I do every year during this time, actually twice annually, I have a, need to disclose a potential conflict of interest. So if I may, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
As some of you may know, my wife serves as a department head for the Housing and Neighborhood Development Department. Over the course of the next few months, the council will con, consider legislation relating to city budget in 2021. By voting on this budget, I would be voting in part on the funds for budgets overseen by my spouse. There is a provision in Local Code which applies when a council member is required to take action on a matter where he or she has a direct financial interest, which is more than minimal or different from that already shared by the general public. In that event, the council member must explain the potential conflict and either, one, ask that he or she be excused from voting, deliberating, or taking action on this matter, or, two, state why he or she is able to participate fairly, objectively, and in the public interest despite the potential conflict. In this case, I wish to declare that potential conflict and state that because of the size and the significance of the overall city budget, I believe that I have a duty to participate, and because of that duty, I will be able to participate fairly, objectively, and in the public interest despite this potential conflict. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, I could, the timer was starting for you.
I know. That's, that's, that's our president. I know.
I know. You still have three minutes of questions. I'm the chair. Questions from council members. Councilmember Sandberg, sorry, is going to go first. Okay.
Thank you. Ms. Sims, this, this is probably a very timely question. I know I'm getting questions about it all the time. And that is in neighborhoods where people are seeing incidences who are not not carefully socially distancing and properly wearing their masks. And if they have concerns about that as being any kind of a spreader event, what's the best mechanism for them to report? Is it the BPD, or is it you report, or can you talk to that in any way, shape, or form?
I'm, I'm sorry, you cut out a little bit during your question. So if I can repeat your question, make sure I understand it.
Okay.
So is it that what, who the people should report to if they see people not doing, practicing social distancing and wearing masks? Well, I think they can put it in.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. So they can put that in U report, and then we can determine based upon U report which department that would handle that situation? You know, it may also be something that they may want to contact the health department because they are the ones who look into that situation as well.
Okay, so they have some options, but U report might be the quickest to just get that reported quickly?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Scandalarie.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Sims. I am always in awe of just how many plates you have spinning in hand. So thank you for the update on the CDBG. Can you ballpark the total amounts for social services and physical improvements this year?
So, so social service, probably about $125,000. So as you can see, our social service funding is a lot less than what the council does under their Jack Hopkins funding. So that's why we're only able to fund about six agencies per year. And then we probably receive about $450,000 that we use for our physical improvement. We're also allowed to use 20% of the grant for administrative costs, and that makes up the bulk of it. Our allocation this past year was probably around about $585,000.
Thank you for that. And I think it's, it's worth paying attention to the whole of what we can offer to the nonprofit community this year, particularly. Are those, is there, I know that Jack Hopkins is offering an additional round of funding. Is there anything similar going on with CDBG grant monies?
So yes, we as well received, under the CARES Act, a special allocation for COVID funding. We did a round of applications, requesting applications back in June, where our, have submitted those to HUD for approval process. And we look to offer our second round of COVID funding under CDBG program sometime in September, along the same times where we'll be taking applications for our CDBG 2021 fiscal year.
Thank you, and thank you for your good work in that area.
Councilmember Sims, did you have a question? I saw your hand up earlier.
I did. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for that report, Ms. Sims. If I may say so, I always enjoy hearing that. Part of your presentation, you said that 92% of the resolved actions on valid complaints in the U report, but your goal was to be completing that at 94%. Can you give me, give us an idea on the other 6%, I guess, beyond your goal? What can be considered unresolved, or what is a difficulty in maybe reaching 100?
So some complaints that we may get are complaints that we may not be able to resolve, or there are complaints that are not for our department that we forward on to another department. Or there may be complaints that once we investigate, they're not valid.
Okay, thank you.
That can make up the difference.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes, thank you. A couple of questions related to neighborhood engagement involvement. I, I think you mentioned that there were some, some efforts underway to, to try to get students more involved in their neighborhood in some capacity. Could you speak a little bit more to what that might look like?
Well, actually, that is just something that our new neighborhood program manager has looked to do for 2021. We've, we've discussed different things about just how to get them involved, be it attending more neighborhood association meetings, providing more activities for them within the neighborhood. So that's why I say stay tuned, because we're just now starting to brainstorm on how to get a student involved. And if you have any ideas, please send them my way.
Sure. Thank you. As I, now that students are back, I'll start hosting constituent meetings that are focused kind of on the university population again. So I'll be sure to bring that up and think about it and let you know. A follow-up question related. I was going to ask about the department's relationship with the Council of Neighborhood Associations. And it was, I guess it's mentioned that, that YAC is a liaison to the, to Kona in, in here. And I think their relationship used to be different some years ago. So I was just wondering if you could explain and, and share a few details about what that looks like.
So our neighborhood program manager does attend the Kona meetings, and I have also attended Kona meetings in the past. I think Kona, it's my understanding, is going through some reorganization. And so they're trying to rebrand that as an organization. And, but we have been involved, and all of my program manager, neighborhood program manager, both the current one, as well as Vicky Proban, who retired last year, attended all those meetings and provided assistance as needed.
So staff hours and, and kind of communication is the nature of the relationship. Is that right? Thank you.
Councilmember Pymont Smith.
Yes, thank you. Just to follow up on what Councilmember Flaherty was asking. So currently, the city does not provide funding directly to Kona. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then I had a separate question. So one of your goals in the area of affordable housing is to conduct bi-annual onsite monitoring of all dedicated workforce housing units. So is bi-annual, does that mean twice a year, or does that mean once every two years? I'm sorry, I always get that mixed up.
It means once every two years.
Okay. So then I'm, I'm wondering why it's not done every year? Because the, these are property owners who have gotten some benefits from the city in return for that workforce housing. So we do want to make sure that, that they are doing and providing the housing that they said they would. So can you just speak to that as to why it's only every two years?
Okay, so every two years, we will go onsite, right? And we actually will look at the records. So they'll send us information annually about the tenant information and the, the tenants determined that they qualify for the housing. But then we will actually go onsite to review that information and maybe do tenant and talk to the tenants who are in those units.
So even in the years when there's not an onsite inspection, so to speak, or contact, there, there is paperwork that they have to file?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other council member question? I have one question for right now. Okay, I was raised to have, like, put a very high importance on properly functioning and place smoke detectors. And I think you said that you have a problem with landlords not installing smoke detectors properly. Did I, did I read that? Did we say that?
No. What I said is that what we're looking to do is, when we do inspections, that's probably one of our highest violations. But the reason why is that students take the batteries out of the smoke detectors. And so when we come, they forget to put the batteries back in before we do the inspection. And so what we want to do is educate students on how important it is not to remove those batteries from the smoke detector text, of the smoke detector. But on the same time, do education to the property owners as well for something that they should work with their tenants about and telling them how important it is to leave the smoke detector, the batteries in the smoke detectors.
Right, that sounds good. So I was, yeah, I was going to ask if you work with the fire department or IU to do education around that, and maybe even, I guess we wouldn't supply smoke detectors, but I don't, I don't know, especially to landlords, right? But just to really make sure we got them in there.
Yeah, so usually they're there. It's just a battery's been removed, or maybe they've been hardwired, and then they've taken them back to a manual one. We did it in the past when we've done neighborhood cleanups, given out smoke detectors to residents. But it's a little hard. I think the, the fire department in the past have had those smoke detectors donated to them, and they've been able to utilize them for residents, but they haven't been able to do it, I don't think, for rental property owners.
Right, yeah. Yeah, that's sort of a different topic for me, but sometimes I think, right, we, we incentivize homeowners or owner-occupied folks by giving them free stuff when like All Lives Matter. So even if you're a tenant, we want to make sure that you have those properly placed and functioning smoke detectors and other safety devices. So I don't know, maybe just something to consider, expanding some programs to include landlords just for the sake of the tenants, you know?
I'll be happy to look into that.
Okay, yeah, it wasn't a question. Sorry. Okay, any other questions? Okay. I guess I don't see any hands up right now. So we can move to, okay, public comment, yes? Well, you know, I was going to give an update on comment because we've had so many people join that we're giving, anyone who wants to speak two minutes, just raise your hand. If you have anything you'd like to say, and Chris Bolden will take care of you.
It looks like there is one hand raised, which is Sam Dove. So Sam, if you would like to go ahead and unmute yourself.
Mr. Dove, it's a little hard to hear you, but if you would like to comment, you can also type your comment into the chat box, and our meeting host will read that for us. Okay. Okay, thank you for your comment. It looks like next we have.
Next, we have Greg Alexander. Mr. Alexander, you are unmuted.
Hi, thanks. I'm Greg Alexander. Just wanted to draw your attention to the fact that Housing and Neighborhood has a lot of responsibilities for really a very small number of inspectors. I happen to run into them. I have a rental, and it's just amazing how much work they do, but also how long you wait for them to show up, how long it takes to interact because of all the work that they do. And they're the only group in town that maintains sidewalks in general. And so that's crazy. And on top of that, they, they don't. So if, if it's Friday, So if it's Friday and it's snowing, you can file any, any sort of complaint you want, but they're not going to see it until Monday morning. If it's a three-day weekend, they're not going to see it until Tuesday morning. And then it'll take them potentially several days to get out and inspect the sidewalk, which it'll still be covered with snow by that time. There are whole streets, major thoroughfares where not a single landowner clears the sidewalk. And the same for sidewalk blocked by vegetation. And then they get out there, and what do they do? They write a warning after the fact, and then they never re-inspect. And it's not effective. The sidewalks are blocked all summer if there's a vegetation problem. The sidewalks are blocked for the entire duration. There's below, you know, freezing all winter long. It's, it's not working, and it shouldn't be Housing and Neighborhood's responsibility. You guys passed a plan, I believe, 11 years ago, saying that public works should take care of the sidewalks. It's just ridiculous to throw that onto such an overworked department. Thanks.
If I can address that. If I could add, so.
Well, okay. What we tend to do, Ms. Sims, is finish public comment, and then a council member can ask you to address that. Which I'm sure somebody will. Yes, Stephen?
I have a message from Sam Dove that I can read out loud if that's all right. Sam said that they're selling the house, I believe, next door at 834 Sheridan Drive. And for any other members of the public who have any audio issues or issues commenting, you are welcome to send a message over the chat for us to read out loud like Sam did. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments, Kirk Bolden?
That's it? I can see.
Okay, at this time, right now, okay. We'll go back to council for additional questions. I can also ask, I'll just go ahead and ask Ms. Sims to address the public comment from Mr. Alexander.
Thank you. I just wanted to state that during snow removal, the code says that we cannot ticket until 24 hours after the snow has stopped. And then we try to go in the areas first, in the downtown areas and areas around schools, so that the children can have clear pathways in those neighborhoods to get to the relevant schools. And then we go out. You know, I do thank Mr. Alexander for his comment. It is true, when you only have six inspectors, and their job not only is Title VI compliance, but also doing rental inspections, that there's only so much we can get to in a day. But we do our best to try to get out there during snow removal time and make sure that the snow is removed from the sidewalks.
Thank you very much. Councilmember question, follow-up? Councilmember final comment? For Ms. Sims, her hand? Okay, seeing none, I think the clerk can now call the roll for a due process vote on the Housing and Neighborhood Development Budget.
Okay, so. Let's see, we'll start with Councilmember Rosenberg.
Oh, yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Bowlin?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
And Scandalary?
Yes.
Thank you.
I think my audio might have cut out. Thank you very much, Ms. Sims. Did you also call Councilmember Rallo?
I called on all nine councilmembers, yes, including.
Sorry, I think, yeah, I think mine just, mine just cut out, I think. I didn't hear everybody. Okay, so everyone said yes. Okay, okay, thank you very much. Okay, moving right along with our evening. Up next, we have Economic and Sustainable Development. We have Director Alex Crowley with a 20-minute presentation. Hello, good evening, Mr. Crowley. You can share your screen and begin whenever you're ready.
Thank you very much. Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Alex Crowley. I'm the Director of Economic and Sustainable Development, or ESD. Thank you for the opportunity to present the department's 2021 budget for your consideration, and thanks to the mayor's office and the controller team for their help with the budget. This evening, I will summarize our recent accomplishments, highlight key initiatives for 2021, point to some specific funding changes for 2021, and then separately, at the end, I will summarize our 2021 Recover Forward requests. I look forward to your questions at the end of my presentation. I trust everybody can see my screen. Okay. So. Now I'm having a little technical issue, one second, please. There we go. Okay. First, let me introduce my ESD colleagues. They include six highly capable, motivated, and talented individuals, each with their distinct role supporting ESDs and the administration's priorities. They are Lauren Travis, Assistant Director of Sustainability, Sean Starwitz, Assistant Director for the Arts, Jane Cooper-Smith, Assistant Director for Small Business Development, Rachel Byer, Local Food Coordinator, a three-year position co-funded by the U.S. Department of Agriculture through Purdue University, Kaiza Goodman, Special Projects Manager. Thank you again for your approval of her position, which was new to the department in 2020, and Marina Patrick, Customer Service Representative and the glue keeping us all together. ESD is a small team that more often than not finds itself in the thick of and often leading some of the administration's most visible priorities. It is my distinct honor to serve alongside these remarkable public servants. The department works to cultivate a resilient community built on shared prosperity, inclusive economic opportunity, environmental stewardship, and a thriving arts and culture ecosystem. In other words, our mission is to enhance the quality of life for all residents, especially underserved populations in Bloomington. Our areas of concentration are sustainability, including environmental sustainability, economic sustainability, and equity, support for arts and culture, entrepreneurship, and small business support, as well as more extensive economic development projects. To accomplish our goals, our small team depends upon myriad partners inside and outside the city. They are too numerous to list, but we could not do our work without them, and we very much appreciate those strong partnerships. Before I get into the details of our 2020 accomplishments and our 2021 proposed budget, I would like to frame the moment we're in as a community, country, and world, and how that informs not just what ESD has been doing in 2020, but also how we have reset our plans for 2021 and beyond. As Edward Glazer writes in his book Triumph of the City, "A city is not its structures, it is its people." And COVID is having a devastating impact on the people of Bloomington, whether shop owners, artists, employees of our major employers, or small businesses, the newly unemployed, or the chronically unemployed, white, black, Latinx, Asian, the young, the old. COVID is hurting everyone in some way. And, as you know, the pandemic has attacked the economically vulnerable especially hard, much like it has attacked those with pre-existing health vulnerabilities. The economically vulnerable portion of the population is the least able to withstand this disruption. According to a recent McKinsey report, 86% of the U.S. jobs that are vulnerable to pay cuts, lost hours, and layoffs are held by workers earning less than $40,000 a year. People of color and less educated workers disproportionately work in those occupations. And 40% of the revenues of black-owned businesses are generated in the five most vulnerable sectors, compared with 25% of the revenues of all businesses. As we review our recent accomplishments with you, it should be no surprise, therefore, that we spent much of our time as a department these past few months with your critical support, focused on the impact of COVID, including these and other specific actions taken since last March of this year: the Rapid Response Loan Program, reopening support, the online farmers market, and accelerated arts funding for operations support. 2020 has been a year of stress and change for our community, and frankly, for the department team itself. And ESD has helped the city's response to the pandemic, its resulting economic devastation, and its search for racial justice and climate justice. As an organization, we've learned to adapt and to find opportunities to become more efficient in delivering our department's core services. We've recognized in ourselves and in our colleagues a resilience and surprising flexibility as these multiple crises have continued to throw new challenges at us. And yet, even as we see that COVID continues to disrupt plans across the community, we are optimistic about the future, determined to help the community emerge stronger than before, and confident that the people of Bloomington, all of us together, will continue to work hard and support each other as we prepare for what will surely be a difficult period ahead of us. So it's a tribute to the ESD team that even as we have reeled somewhat from the past several months while we adjusted to a different way of doing business, ESD has continued to move forward with initiatives to which we have previously committed. Following are some highlights of our other recent activities. In the area of sustainability and local food, we completed an important greenhouse gas inventory for 2018, an action laid out in the Sustainability Action Plan, and an inventory forecast using the new updated methodology that will allow us to compare emission trends over the last decade and standardize future trends. This inventory informed the development of the mayor's Climate Action Cabinet Group. We completed a climate vulnerability assessment earlier this year and are in progress on a significant effort to complete a corresponding climate action plan by the end of the year. We continue to support renewable energy projects across the community, including Solarise and Solar4All, and have made significant headway in the local food arena, including completing a local food marketplace needs assessment and crafting plans for a farm stop concept inspired by our friends in Ann Arbor. In the area of business relations and economic development, we're working closely with the two garage teams, one for the Trades District and one for the Fourth Street Garage, as well as the hospital site reuse teams to help facilitate these significant municipal investments. While it may seem strange to some that we're working on these projects during the throes of a pandemic, it is precisely this kind of long-term investment that will make Bloomington, that will allow Bloomington to recover stronger and thrive in the future. Additionally, we continue to aggressively support small businesses in town and are adapting our systems to streamline and improve our business licensing and permitting, as well as the terrific programs of the Bloomington Urban Enterprise Association. And finally, we are pressing ahead with a number of public arts projects, including a very exciting collaboration with the Columbus Area Arts Council called Paper Pavilions, which opens October 1. We continue to strengthen the Bloomington Entertainment and Arts District under its new branding and strategic plan, and are working with the arts community on salary and operating efficiency planning to strengthen them for the future. So as you see, while certainly COVID threw a monkey wrench into our plans, we are also staying as focused as possible on pre-pandemic commitments as we progress through 2020. Turning now to 2021 and some key budget initiatives detailed in your budget memo. Our focus on sustainability, with particular emphasis on the risks of climate change to our most vulnerable populations, increases significantly with the combined 2021 budget and 2021 Recover Forward proposals. If there's a silver lining to COVID, it's that the pandemic has exposed in stark relief the long-term impacts of climate change that we might not have perceived as clearly as a result of our relative adaptability as humans. Instead, we see in real time how exposed the most vulnerable populations truly are. Our 2021 budget, therefore, further focuses our efforts to support them and the community as a whole in managing climate hazards, finding efficiencies and diversification of energy sources, and increasing access to food, especially local food. It should be noted, what you see represented in ESD's budget only scratches the surface of the sustainability investments the ESD team and our city colleagues make across city operations in the community. By our estimates, the city will invest more than $40 million across its operations in sustainability and climate-related projects in 2021. This includes significant investments by CBU, parks, and a number of other departments. Thus, ESD's relatively modest budget is part of a much larger picture, much larger funding effort designed to help our community address the significant climate challenges before us. One area of concentration within the department's sustainability efforts is local food. Building upon the local food needs assessment that I referred earlier, our efforts in this area will focus on three projects: supporting the startup of a farm stop that will further develop the marketplace for existing local growers, and importantly, shift greater market ownership to them; a farm-to-school initiative that will provide elementary schools, students, opportunities to visit local farms and eat locally grown food in their cafeterias; and an incubator farm project that will help to develop new farm businesses in our community with special priority and focus going to beginning farmers, women, and people of color. You will see these programs highlighted in the budget. In addition to other projects we're developing to strengthen the link between local growers and institutional buyers. COVID has highlighted the frailty of our local, small, and mid-sized business ecosystem, including our dependence upon students and the university community to fuel many of our downtown businesses. You may recall that recently, SmartAsset.com assessed Bloomington as the college town most economically vulnerable of all college towns in the United States during COVID-19. With your help, which the community very much appreciates, we have been nimble and responsive thus far to address some of that weakness, but significant work remains to be done. In 2021, this will include continued programs to aid in COVID recovery, continuing our focus on minority-owned and woman-owned businesses; support to businesses to help them address systemic racism; programs to help businesses and employees lower their reliance on a single occupancy vehicle commuting, which is both a climate-related and economic benefit; and further expansion of the role of the Bloomington Urban Enterprise Association in COVID recovery and beyond. And at the same time, we will continue to press forward with major economic development initiatives to help position Bloomington to emerge stronger and more vibrant in the future. We will be more deliberate about using incentives to attract and grow jobs in the new economy, including the green economy, and jobs that will pay a higher wage than many of our tourism-related jobs currently pay. We will focus on the next generation of sector growth, building upon the success of the mill and other technology initiatives underway to pursue a federal grant from the Economic Development Administration to realize Bloomington's competitive position in technology development, including artificial intelligence, machine learning, and other next-generation technologies in close cooperation with the university. And our work will continue to focus on leveraging the significant investments we've been making in the Trades District and Hospital Site, both of which are designed to strengthen Bloomington and the regional economy for decades to come. both of which are designed to strengthen Bloomington and the regional economy for decades to come. And finally, underpinning it all, our quality of life, as exemplified by Bloomington's longstanding commitment to and leadership in its arts and culture assets. Whether Bloomington's rich music and theater scene, its painters and sculptors and designers, or its restaurants and public spaces, Bloomington's rich landscape of cultural assets has put to an extreme test over the past several months, underscoring the fact that many of these cultural assets are living hand-to-mouth even under normal circumstances. Our department will redouble our efforts to buttress these many organizations directly and indirectly, whether through the arts facilities we support, direct commissions to artists that make our public installations, or the many organizations that work each day to make our lives better. As Pablo Picasso once said, "Art washes away from the soul, the dust of everyday life." Turning now to some specific budget changes in 2021. As the mayor noted in his opening remarks on Monday, and to help you better understand our 2021 budget request, we have separated out the baseline ESD budget from 2021 stimulus funding requests. Let me begin here with some changes in the baseline 2021 ESD budget. Our overall budget is increasing $50,394 or 5.1% over 2020's budget. Category 1, which is personnel, increases by $84,073. This is largely attributable to the wages and benefits associated with the new transportation demand management position that will reside in our department. Category 2, which is for supplies, is an increase of $30,650 and includes funding for an initial phase of moving city facilities to zero waste in the next couple of years and some additional support for Green Team programs, an effort designed to cultivate sustainable practices from within the organization. And category 3 helps to offset the increase in the other two categories with a net decrease of $64,329 year-over-year. We will be wrapping up our climate vulnerability and planning work this year, ending the $50,000 per year investment in that process we have borne in 2019 and 2020. But we will also be adding important software functionality for energy tracking and grant management within the organization. You have all of the detailed information in your budget packet. Here is a summary of the net impacts of our 2021 budget and comparisons over the previous several years. Again, this is the subtotal associated with ESD's baseline operating budget excluding Recover Forward investments. So now let me turn to Recover Forward for 2021. We appreciate your recent approval of 2019 reversion monies to help us make counter-cyclical 2020 Recover Forward investments in the community. Our department is already beginning to implement programs in support of that initial trough of investment. ESD has been tasked with managing additional 2021 Recover Forward programs and funding with your approval, totaling $1.13 million. As you will see here, much of that investment is a continuation of 2020 Recover Forward investments, if they are successful. We are proposing to continue low-income and small-business energy conservation investments, local agricultural support, which I mentioned is a key outcome of the local food needs assessment earlier in my presentation, and the completion of the farm stop launch. We are proposing a significant investment in the arts for operating support to help arts organizations and individual artists emerge from COVID next year, including interim operating funding for the John Walter Art Center, an historic and important arts facility in the community. The scope of that exact funding support is currently being evaluated. And we are proposing continued funding for job training and life sciences job support programs, which will be implemented starting in the second half of the year. I will note that we'll be learning about the effectiveness of some of these programs in the months ahead and will be able to adjust funding support and program design based on key performance indicators, or KPIs, we are embedding in each program so that 2021 funding can be directed to the most successful elements of the total Recover Forward package. Here's a summary of the breakdown of how the 2021 Recover Forward funding would become categorized within our budget with your approval of the request. Again, this chart is only the 2021 Recover Forward funding and is distinct and separate from the previous chart, which reflected ESD's 2021 operating budget. Thank you again for your time and your attention this evening. Thank you for your support of the recent requests we've made to help our community during these trying times. As I've said earlier, we're determined to help the community emerge stronger than before and confident that the people of Bloomington, all of us together, will continue to work hard and support each other as we prepare for what will surely be a difficult period ahead of us. I'm joined by my departmental colleagues and we look forward to answering any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Mr. Crowley. Okay, we'll open it up to council member questions. We'll start with council member Stan.
Thank you for that report, Mr. Crowley. Always very, very interesting. Couple of questions. First, with the farm stop initiative, and you may have mentioned this, but as far as the product, will that, is that a seasonal program or will that plan to be year-round moving forward?
That will be a year-round farm stop.
Okay, understanding that product changes from season to season to season, but so I was wondering about that. Thank you. And next, you mentioned a systemic racism small business toolkit. Can you share with us what that means, what that contains? What are some of the elements or aspects of that toolkit?
Yeah, so I will start and then I will ask Jane Cooper Smith to join in the conversation. So you know, at a high level, a chronic problem among small businesses in particular is to be able to carve out time to do things that are important for them. Many are willing and really want to do a lot of things that they just don't have time to do because they're balancing out so many different things. So we found that, you know, being able to package together a program to make it much more readily and easily accessible for them is going to help them integrate it into their operations, saving them the time to do that research. And Jane, I don't know if you want to jump in and talk a little bit more about the specifics.
Sure, happy to. The idea for this program grew out of a sustainability toolkit that we had interns working on this summer. And as Alex mentioned, business owners often don't have time to do their own, well, small business owners don't have time to do their own strategic planning and yet they may be well-intentioned and want to take action in this area. So I think the idea behind this is just that we will try to, you know, select community partners and develop resources that could take the form of online training, could take the form of, you know, just materials that they can share with their staff members. But the idea is that we would be able to help businesses take a step back and think critically about what biases might be in place in their own organizations. I know we've been going through this process in my organizations and I think we've been through a phase where we thought we were doing a really great job leading ourselves through it, but it's just, it's more powerful when you have a good program that you can follow with good research behind it. So I think the resources themselves that come out of the toolkit could look like a few different, take a few different forms.
Okay, so the resources are the specifics, I guess. But do we know, I'm sorry, my time is up. I may follow up later. Thank you.
Please, thanks.
Thank you. Other council, did I see council member Rallo with your hand up?
No. I was about to.
Okay, okay. Don't worry. You want to go?
Yes.
Okay, yes. Okay, go ahead.
You read my mind. I wanted to just plant this idea. I don't think that we're equipped to do it right now, but I could. Mr. Crowley, I appreciate you and your team's work on the local food economy. I think that's a really, I've been really very happy about administration moving ahead on that for various reasons. I think it's really good for the community and good for the economy. Research relates wealth and et cetera. But it also is good for climate. But it's kind of hard to wrap our head around it because it requires a lot of work. It's food, conventional food requires a lot of fossil energy and a lot of it comes in the form of transportation. So if we keep it local or if we have organic growing, that's even better. But in the case that we grow locally, we're using, we're emitting less carbon, but we don't, we don't account for that right now, am I correct?
Oh, that's right. And in fact, it's even worse because we're arguably paying less for some of that food which is mass-produced and so it's even worse.
Yeah, so I guess what I'm saying is, would it be possible to, if it's not already part of your program, to emphasize the climate benefits of local food? And maybe at some point we'll be able to evaluate the reduction in emissions. If we can't right now, maybe we can sometime in the future because this is something that goes unaccounted for, you know. Our carbon budget is mostly about how much fossil fuel we use in various forms of energy, you know, whether it's heating or cooling or transportation and that sort of thing. But we don't really account for, you know, the food budget, which is probably quite a bit. So I just want to plant that idea and see if, you know, your team could incorporate it, at least in terms of conveying that message to the public about how eating local food is good for the climate.
Yes, absolutely. I think it's a great idea. I mean, we very much look at it that way in terms of the work that we're doing, but I think incorporating it into the messaging strategy, I think, is absolutely something we can do.
Councilmember Stanbly.
Thank you. Mr. Crowley, thank you. I can't imagine what it's like to be you during this extraordinary year. I can't imagine what it's like to be any CEP staff right now. I was a part of some of the conversations involving the Rapid Recovery Fund and I appreciate that, but it's been a little bit of time since we've had an update. If you could just do a quick summary of how much money has gone out and any impact that's had. And then in particular, what I want to ask, we actually set a goal for ourselves of ensuring that we reach women and minority-owned businesses as part of that. How are we doing in that regard, I guess is my question. Are we, are we being successful in reaching that particular segment?
Yeah, so I mean, the, let me start with the, just the summary of what's going on. We have to date 59 recipients of loan funds. I think there were 60 originally, but one has repaid. And that amount of the food and beverage money, which was $2 million that was set aside, 1.3 million has been used. So there's about just a little shy of $700,000 left. And then of the roughly $350,000 of the BEA funding, just shy of 300 has been used. So there's about $50,000 left there. We are very aware of and sensitive to the situation that's happening in town right now. You were part of the early discussions. We really appreciated you having a role in that. We thought at the time that by this point, we would be coming out of the woods and we are not only not coming out of the woods, but we are very much in the thick of things still. So we are tooling up right now to look at how to most effectively use these $700,000 left of the food and beverage monies and try to go back out into the marketplace to try to address some of the revenue shortfalls that are going to occur as a result of things like Big Ten sports not happening and other tourism-related revenues that would have occurred this year. So that's sort of a high, you know, high-level summary of what's going on. And regarding, you know, the demographic breakdown of who's been, you know, taking loans in this program, we intended to come back to you actually probably right around this time of year and do a full report. You know, it's, here it is. But again, we're not really done with this at all. So early indications were that we were reaching with some degree of success minority-owned businesses and women-owned businesses. We have actually recently made a concerted effort to go and meet with businesses on Fourth Street. The restaurants on Fourth Street tend to be more minority-owned. Oh, sorry.
And I'll come back with a couple of questions. I'm sorry. Thanks. Councilmember Volan is always keeping us real with the hand motion. Councilmember Stanberg, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Crowley. I know a lot of individuals who have been beneficiaries of the Waldron Art Center are curious and interested in hearing about its future. So I don't know if it's too soon to reveal too many more details, but can you talk just a bit about the status?
Sure. So as you may know, Ivy Tech has owned the building and run the building for years. They recently came to the city and said, we would like to get, you know, the city to take that building back over again, which, you know, was a little bit out of nowhere for us. But so we're still trying to figure out what does that mean? We have done some due diligence on the economics of the building and also the physical structure. We have a pretty good idea of what that looks like and we are right now in the process of figuring out how to ensure that that building can remain what it is, at least for the foreseeable future, absent some other facility coming in that might be better. So unfortunately, I don't have much more information than that. We are highly, highly sensitive to the role that it plays as an arts facility, particularly for theater, but also for, you know, painting and other arts. And so, you know, obviously, we're trying to tread very, very carefully as we plan ahead for that building and will be, you know, communicating about that in the very not-too-distant future.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes, thanks. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Crowley. I wanted to ask about the transportation demand management position, which I'm glad to see the administration working towards funding that program. We had the plan, of course, that council adopted by resolution or supported by resolution, I think, earlier this year. I guess specifically the plan, well, the plan came from the Planning and Transportation Department and then the plan itself on page 49 sort of anticipates where a TDM program might be housed. And it says either the Public Works Department or the Planning and Transportation Department would be best suited to house the program or possibly the MPO, Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is housed in transportation, is planning on transportation as well. So could you, I was a little bit surprised to see it in ESD. So if you could speak to the rationale there, I would appreciate it. Thanks.
Sure. You know, if you, if you look at the plan, especially, you know, if you have it up pages 57, 8, and 9, that's where it details out, you know, the primary activities of a TDM effort. And a lot of that, you know, a TDM effort is largely a marketing effort because we are not, we are not putting in new infrastructure per se. What we're doing is highlighting and optimizing the use of the existing infrastructure to reduce single occupancy vehicle travel. And so, you know, the first couple of years is promotion, it's marketing, it's outreach to employers. And when you, when you think about that package of activities, that's really less in the wheelhouse naturally of a planning group or a public work group. And it's actually more in the wheelhouse of a group like ESD that is already outwardly facing, already engaging with those same targets of communication and also doing a fair amount of marketing communication itself. So as we looked closely at it, we thought, okay, you know, it probably doesn't matter that much where it stands, except that if it were going to be in another department, they would have to be interfacing very, very closely with us anyway. And so it made sense, as we looked at it, to actually incorporate it into the activities that we have going on. So it's, it's an extension of the small business and mid-sized and large business communications that we have. And it's also an extension of our sustainability efforts. And so I think it'll fold really well into what we have in the department as a standard. And so I think it'll fold really well into what we have in the department as a standard set of activities.
Thanks. Maybe a small follow-up in the time remaining. Do you know what educational background that position would be seeking out, whether it's, you know, a bachelor's or master's and kind of what field, like what degree type?
Well, you know, the current thinking in hiring is not to anchor stuff on degrees. And so, you know, we probably wouldn't limit ourselves that way.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Volan, I think I saw your hand. Go ahead.
Yes, I wanted to ask about the study that named Bloomington the most economically vulnerable. I have to just tell you that I did not take the study seriously at all. I wonder how much it bothered you and, you know, what, what your reaction was to it?
Well, as I wrote in the Herald Times, and I, and they can, I said they can kiss our asset. They, they, it was a very simplified study. They looked at only a handful of, of dynamics in a marketplace. It was nonetheless a little shocking to see ourselves at the top of that list. So whether or not you believe exactly in their methodology, and I don't, you know, I think they missed a whole bunch of things that are going on in Bloomington, but, but, you know, they can't be expected to know that from the distance of, of their analysis. It was, it was, it gave me pause. And more importantly, what it did, it really sort of highlighted for me our community's dependence on the, you know, the tourism related businesses that we have. And it, you know, it made me realize that I think there's a really important opportunity ahead of us to diversify our economy and to expand our economy into traded sectors, into new growing sectors like technology, which is why I mentioned the Economic Development Administration Grant. So, you know, just when COVID happens and the bottom falls out of our economy from a workforce and a, and a, you know, income perspective, you know, that is as a result of our dependency on that economy.
Yeah, no, I mean, I not only agree with you, I just want to say to you and your staff that, you know, that study is as shallow as can be and that the hope for the diversification of Bloomington's economy is your department, you know. So more so than any university. It didn't even take into account actual college towns like, you know, Greencastle or, it was only college metros that they counted. So, you know, I would just urge you, in case it bothered you at all, if you look any deeper at the numbers, it just, please, please don't let that guide your, your work. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you so much. Glad to hear it.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, um, could you please tell us more about the zero waste green building certification?
Yeah, so I will start and then Lauren, if, if feel free to jump in. We, you know, we, we feel like while we're doing okay as a, as a, as a city operation when it comes to our waste, you know, management, we are, it's a little haphazard. Some facilities are performing better than others. It's, it's, so it's also a little bit, you know, city halls, for example, is, is doing a little bit better than maybe some other buildings. So we, what we want to do is take a very hard look at facilities across the city, look for those places that may have significant improvements ahead of them, fire stations, maybe, for example, and, and then apply some effort to try to mitigate as much of that waste as possible. So Lauren, I don't know if you want to jump in and?
Sure. I would just say that past efforts have shown that we could perform better in waste. And I think particularly in our operations, we have a lot of different waste streams. We have, within City Hall instituted composting, but to extend that to other facilities and to also increase the amount of other types of waste that perhaps require different handling would be systemized under this process. So it's just another way for us to be able to more effectively reduce our overall impact and reduce the amount of tonnage that's going to landfill.
And there, you know, the private sector has been very creative. There's some, there are some companies, companies you might not expect, who have done just amazing things in, in, in terms of zero waste. And so, you know, I think we, we really want to try to push ourselves in that direction.
And is there a, a national certification process or?
Yes, there is. And so we would have to build up to that. I mean, there's a very rigorous process for that, but year one, you know, is really more about probably evaluation, maybe making some initial investments and then build ourselves up to that certification.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Smith, I think I saw your hand up. Go ahead.
I did have a question. Thanks, Mr. Crowley. I appreciate you've done a great job with economic sustain of development. It's been great. I do have this thing that keeps sticking in my head is the transportation demand manager that you're proposing to hire. Right now, we're under this unprecedented budget crisis and we're COVID, which is driving down people moving around in a transportation sense. So my thought is to ask you, is in, would it be more prudent to wait to add that kind of position until things start to recover more? Thank you.
Yeah, that's a great question. So I would answer that a couple of different ways. First of all, you know, it is a 2021 item, so it takes a while to get the position in place, to get them, you know, running and to start to apply the program. So, you know, I think the, the, the impact that they will have probably won't happen before mid, mid-year next year realistically. Hopefully, we're in better shape than, than we are now and things are starting to pick up, but, you know, you just never know. But, but I would also say that even if things are in the same doldrums for a couple of years ahead of us in terms of use of transportation movement or, and moving around, single occupancy vehicle travel is expensive and it is, you know, it has a hidden cost to it. So it's, it's not, you know, I mean, it has an important climate impact, but it also has an important economic impact. The average, you know, cost of owning a vehicle, I think, per year is something like $8,000. So there's a compelling economic argument to, to someone cutting out that mode of transportation if they can do it and using what we have in town, which is fairly robust in terms of alternative options. So I wouldn't necessarily wait on it. And I think, I understand the, the point of your question, but I think there's short-term value in it, even if, you know, next year, we're still in the same place we are right now.
I appreciate it. Thank you for your answer.
Other council member questions? I think everyone has gone once. I, I'm just going to submit questions in writing, I think, because there's a lot going on. Can we go around to council members? Scandallary?
Thank you. I'd be interested in having you say a little bit more about the E D A grant in particular. Just on a detail point, I know that there's a match expected with that, but I don't see that in budget. So where will those match dollars come from? And then if you could just say more about what exactly that, that will get us, what that will, what that will fund for us?
Sure. So maybe I'll reverse the questions, it'll be easier to understand the match if I answer the second question first. Basically, it's a Trades District Technology Center. So it is a building, but it's a building that has a very specific programming associated with it and inside of it. So it would be a building that is there to grow companies out of the mill, but, but, but also, and, and significantly, to leverage the significant work being done at IU in some of these technologies that I mentioned in the presentation and to put Bloomington on the map when it comes to being able to connect resources here and people here with opportunities nationally and globally. So it's, it's kind of a supersized version of a, of a, of a technology center. And so you have this building and you have programming. And now let me talk about the match. So the match is an 80% federal to 20% local match. So if it's a $10 million building, it's 8 million from, from CARES Act and 2 million from the local funding. And the local funding would come from Redevelopment Commission TIF dollars. So that's why you don't see it in these budgets, but it would, it would be substantial. And so our first goal is to be awarded the grant. And then we've been working with the Redevelopment Commission to prepare them for the possibility of, of being awarded that grant.
Thank you. Other questions, round two? Councilmember Sam?
Thank you. And if I neglected earlier, Mr. Crowley, I just wanted to say, I think you have a wonderful staff and I enjoy working with him. I think they're doing a great thing for our community and so glad to see Ms. Goodman join the crew. I'd like to get back into the toolkit, the systemic racism toolkit. And when I think of systemic racism, ultimately, you're thinking of how to dismantle that so that it's no longer affecting that population that it has long-term. So I guess I wasn't clear on what that toolkit contains. And if it's a vision or an idea right now that isn't fully developed, I mean, that's fine because I can ask later. But I'm curious as to what does that contain? I mean, is that help in navigating, for example, some of the systemic heels in banking and, and loans? Does it have to do with some insurance that affects small business? And then who provides this or administers this, if you will?
Yeah, can I jump, jump in now, Alex?
Sure. Yep.
So I would love it if we had the leverage to tackle the banking industry. This has been a conversation going on between members of our department behind the scenes, but this is geared, so I think the, the product here is, is content, it's information. The people receiving this information would be business owners who elect to sign up for this. I would assume they are relatively small business owners. We would do outreach through a variety of modes. I would assume that the, and you're correct, this is not fully baked yet, partly because we have to have, you know, we've got to have endorsement in order to assign the staff time to fully planning it. That said, I think hiring practices is a good example. There's, there are kind of built-in assumptions about, you know, why a particular business might not be able to attract minority employees, employees of color. And then there are, there are ways of thinking about hiring policies and ways of making your business more attractive and more friendly, ways of seeking out minority employees that you might think, I think there's a tendency for businesses to be on their heels and think, well, that's just not something that we can do, when in reality, there are a lot of practices that you can put into place. There aren't answers for this. I'm sorry, I was distracted. There was one other particular item I wanted to say. Sorry, it's gone.
Okay, no, I thank you. I appreciate it. I look forward to hearing more about it in the future. I, I guess with the time I have, a few seconds, is, will C D F I friendly be involved in any of this as part of this as we move forward? For example, the banking part you mentioned. And we're out of time, so I think you ought to hold that, so.
Let's talk more. Please.
We will. Thank you.
Other council members? Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, thanks. I'm on page 10 of the presentation at the Recover Forward expenditures. And I'm really sorry if I like missed this somewhere, either in your presentation or the memo, but it, the first sentence talks about these Recover Forward expenditures coming from incremental 2021 Recover Forward funding. So I just wanted to clarify first, that's separate than the appropriation we just made a few weeks ago, right? Where we, all that was for 2020 expenditures?
Yes, that's right.
And then regarding 2021 Recover Forward funding, is that, and I guess, yeah, is that anticipated to come from multiple places, rainy day fund, reserves, something else? And, and could you talk about that?
Yeah, I, I'm going to have to defer probably to the Controller's Office when it comes to source of funding, but it is, it is different than 2019 reversions so that that, that approval that happened last week is separate. And this would be a continuation into 2021. And the reason we bring them up at the same time, although it's confusing with the baseline budget, is because obviously it has an impact on what the baseline budget is going to look like. So if we can follow up with you and the, and the council as a whole about the source of that funding with more clarity, I think that might be, might be helpful and I can then?
Or, or we could do it right now.
Before we can do that?
Essentially, that's, if, $2 million, so we're going to move, we're asking to appropriate $2 million out of the rainy day fund and transfer that to the general fund. So the planned expenditures will be expended out of the general fund, but they'll be funded by a transfer into the general fund from the rainy day fund.
And thank you, Mr. Underwood. And will that, and Mr. Crowley, will that come as a separate appropriation ordinance then from the whole budget, but you're just letting us see it now because of the context? Is that right?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
You'll see, it'll, because it's its own fund, you'll see an appropriation out of that and then a receipt in.
Yes. And, and so the full Recover Forward, this, at least this, on this page that I'm seeing, this 1.125 million, that's anticipated to be all from a rainy day transferred to general fund and then into the program?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Other questions from council members? Okay, we had a question come in from Facebook. I'm just going to ask that right now. The E S D budget memo references a pilot incubator farm project. How much of this project will be funded by the city budget and what is the long-term financial support plan for it?
So, well, we are, we are asking for an initial investment in it in 2021. That amount will not fully stand it up and we will need to put some more money in. We are targeting potentially land that the city already owns, so there will be some value to that. And the long-term sustainability of the incubator farm will, you know, have to be worked out through the, through some detailed planning on it. I think it will probably end up requiring some continued funding from city operations, which we would, of course, put in each year as we, as we continue with it.
Thank you. Other council members around two? Okay, I think at this time we can move to public comment. I know a lot of folks have joined, so just going to go over that process. If you would like to comment, please use the right hand function at the bottom of your screen. Each speaker has two minutes. I'll give you the two-minute warning and then you can wrap up and then 10 seconds later we'll mute you and move on, just so everyone gets the exact same amount of time to comment. Okay, Clerk Bolden, if you'll go ahead and get it started.
All right, we'll start with Mr. Alexander. Mr. Alexander, if you can go ahead, you're unmuted.
Hi, thanks. Greg Alexander here. It would be nice if we had a few professionals dedicated to this goal of encouraging development in a way that is beneficial to our environment, but this ain't it. Mr. Crowley himself appeared before this buddy several times last year to champion the cause of spending $30 million of tax money on subsidized parking. That's an ecological disaster. I live by one of these garages. The dust of my everyday life is literally pollution caused by suburbanites driving to subsidized parking. To get you guys to approve the garage, he swore up and down that the garages would somehow help non-automobile transportation, but in reality, the sidewalk by the Forest Feet Garage site has been closed for more than a year now. In that year, two pedestrians have been killed within a block of that closure. This is a stressful and dangerous pedestrian environment in the heart of downtown, and Mr. Crowley helped remove sidewalks there. I am frankly, flabbergasted at the dishonesty on display here. I am in favor of economic development, but this department's recent conduct has been in direct opposition to every sustainability or quality of life goal. Their vision for the future is people commuting from suburbs to lucrative jobs downtown, and those of us who live in the less desirable neighborhoods along arterial, arterial roads can literally choke on the fumes of these privileged few. I'm disgusted. Thanks for the time.
For your comment.
Okay, and next we have, I can't actually see your full name because of the way Zoom has it, but it looks like Brian E. Gomez. You are unmuted.
Good evening.
Please say your full name. Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Brian E. Gomez Palacio and I am somewhat of a recent transplant to Bloomington. I was born and raised in Mexico City and I spent the last 20 years going from Atlanta to Chicago to New York to Austin. And about four years ago, I literally opened Google Maps with my family and started looking for the next chapter of our lives and we ended up with Bloomington. And we ended up with Bloomington because it really promised kind of the arts and culture sector that I loved from living in New York and in Chicago and in Mexico City, but in a more accessible, sizable fit for our young family. And I am really happy to see it has truly delivered on that promise that I found online, to the point where I've met a lot of people and I got very involved, so involved that I'm currently the Chair for the Bloomington Arts Commission. And in that role, about a year ago, I started interviewing a lot of the people who have joined us here tonight to listen in. And I have been very lucky in hearing all of their stories and their passion behind their art and the culture that they bring into the city and that we all get to experience and that I experienced as a patron of the arts, as a mother in MCCSC programming. And I can see the partnerships happening right now through COVID-19 between all of these organizations. We're putting new content and kind of reinventing themselves in order to keep all the little ones in town busy and entertained and still very much a part of the arts and our community. So I have to say that I have seen firsthand and I've heard firsthand the value of the culture and the arts in Bloomington. And not only that, but how imperative they are to our community. So I am very pleased to see the numbers that you're putting forth towards arts and culture as an integral part of our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Okay, next up, we have RM who would like to make a comment. And I'm going to go ahead and unmute you. If you could just make sure you state your name.
Hi, my name is Renee Miller and I'm gonna comment about two different things. One is about, I, I don't know what the program was called, but it had to do with taking children into different farms for food sustainability programs. And I'm just wondering how and who will be in charge of making, vetting those farms to make sure we're not sending our children into environments that have subliminal messages, maybe don't tread on me flags, Nazi flags, that kind of thing. Things that we really don't need to have our children seeing. So that's my first concern about that program and if anybody's addressed that. And then secondly, I think it was Jane Cooper Smith and Mr. Crowley, Crowley talking about the toolkit. I want to ask if the people that will be leading that, or those toolkits for the small businesses will be black people and not white people? Because I think that's extremely important to have people of color, brown and black people leading those programs and not white people. And thank you. And other than that, I'd just like to say Brianna Taylor still has not had any justice for the loss of her life. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Okay, next up, I believe Mr. Lucas has a statement that, or a comment that he's been asked to read.
Yes, and again, I'll just reiterate for any new folks that have joined the meeting. If you are having any issues connecting to the audio or don't have a microphone and would like to make a comment, you can send that over chat and I'd be happy to read it out loud. We have a comment from Dave Askins with the B-Square Beacon, who says, "The city's new online financial interface, like the old interface, lets the public track expenditures that the city is making that are tied to COVID-19." You just search the vendor transactions for COVID-19. That's possible because it's flagged in the description field of each transaction. And that will be useful for potential claims in connections with federal or state reimbursements, as far as he understands. Will recover forward expenses be tracked or flagged in a similar way? And if so, will that tracking work for both 2020 this year for the appropriation ordinance from last week and for 2021? And if not, how, how will we be able to measure the success of recover forward as a whole? Or is this, or will this be handled at the level of a fund that's called Recovered Forward? And that is the comment.
Thank you for your comment.
Okay, and I do not see any other hands raised for comment.
Okay, we will go back to council for follow-up questions now that we've heard from the public. Any councilmember question? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Uh, yes, maybe Mr. Underwood could explain or try to answer the question from Mr. Askins?
Uh, yes, they will be tracked in any year that we have recovered forward funds. We create a program or subdepartment in each of the departments that have funds so that we can specifically track those and then report out on those.
Thank you.
Other questions from councilmembers? Okay, I'll ask another one from public comments. We did have one that asked, who will be administering the program for the systemic racism toolkit? Do we know that yet?
We haven't, as I mentioned, this hasn't been developed. I've been researching programs, but I will be reaching out to CFRD and, and trying to get feedback from other people about what, what program should be utilized. And I agree with, I can't remember the person's initials, RJ's comment about the importance of this type of programming being led by people of color, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other question? Final comment?
Council, oh.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, I think there was a member of the public who wanted to comment but was having trouble with the raise hand function.
Yeah. Is that okay if they go ahead?
Sure.
Okay. This is Emily Jackson and Emily, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Okay, am I there? Yes. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. I don't have the icon, hand icon for some reason. I just wanted to express my support for the Department of Economic and Sustainable Development and their goals for the next year. WFHB is a strong partner with the city. We appreciate everything that, that you do and, and working with you in various areas in arts and culture throughout Bloomington. And very supportive of the Waldron Art Center continuing as an art center to honor the intention of the donation from Cecil Waldron. Many years ago, it's been a very successful place and WFHB has been in the firehouse for 27 years. And we look forward to continuing to grow and be part of the community. Very appreciative of the, the BAC and BUEA. And it's very important, important to have these funds available for grants for the arts community as we have to make changes to continue on. We pivoted from live broadcasting to remote broadcasting and still working at improving those capabilities. So very appreciative of the support, the continued support and working with the city through these various changes and challenges. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Okay, final comment. Any lingering question? Okay, okay. You were at the same, I'm councilmember Scambalary.
Thank you. Thank you to Alex. Thank you to your team for the good work you do. You opened your presentation by saying that a lot of the initiatives associated with responding to COVID kind of landed in your office. And I think that I, I am astonished and at how you've managed that. So thank you for, for the hard work. I also want to acknowledge and thank the arts community too. Most of us have received messages of support for ESD from Picture and the Fire Gallery and Cardinal and WFHB. So a lot of the arts organizations have offered their support as well. And I just wanted to thank them for being part of this conversation because those comments mean a great deal. So you have my enthusiastic support and thanks for the work you're doing.
I think it's our councilmember Flaherty next, and then on deck, councilmember Piedmont Smith, feel free to follow up.
Sure, yeah, thank you so much again for the presentation and all the work you and your department do in ESD. I, I especially liked the 2021 budget request highlights portion of, of your memo, which I think did a nice job calling out sort of, you know, changes and, and explaining them, which is helpful as a sort of summary to track, you know, how things are changing year by year and, and why. And, and some others have done that as well, so I appreciate that. I'll echo councilmember Scambalary's comments that I think, I very much appreciate the arts community reaching out to us in the recent days. And even though it will come in a separate appropriation, I think in the future regarding continued support for the arts community, I think that's important and, and support that. I was also happy to see today, when I went for a run, that the street closure between Walnut and, and, not Walnut, I'm sorry. Yeah, Walnut and Washington in front of Farm and, and the Uptown and Trojan Horse. Though, I mean, it was really happening. There were a lot of folks out there, but, but spaced and, and, you know, able to dine. And I think obviously I've been advocating for that for that type of thing over, over the last month as your department has implemented them. So I was excited to see that, as well as the growing participation in the Parklet Program, which I still think is something we should look at long-term regardless of, of the pandemic. Very briefly, we'll address Mr. Alexander's comment. I, I have been disappointed by some of the sidewalk closures, including at the Forest Street Garage. And just wanted to say that I've tried to work to address that, though I ultimately failed on that particular one. Though I think we may have some structural code change kind of things coming our way that we need to think about in that regard. And finally, I'm gonna abstain tonight because I need to do some more thinking about the, the transportation demand management program and where that's housed in other cities. And, and I think, Mr. Crowley, you made some good points about, about the advantages to housing it in ESD. But, but I just want to think through that a little more. So I'm gonna abstain tonight. But again, thank you all for your work and presentation.
All right. Yes, thank you. You encouraged me to jump right in, so I did. I really, I really commend the staff of ESD, especially Mr. Crowley for his leadership because this has been an unprecedented tumultuous time for the Bloomington economy. All the while, we are still facing the climate catastrophe that is before us. The, and this is what I want to emphasize tonight. I think it's, it's really, there are many good things in this budget, but I want to just emphasize a couple. And that's moving forward with transportation demand management. The, I believe about 27% of our greenhouse gas emissions come from transportation. And so this is a really, a sector where we can, where can have a positive impact on our emissions. And so it's important to have somebody to coordinate that with employers and with people who are just used to getting in their car and driving by themselves to places to, to reduce that footprint is vital. And of course, I, I'm very much in favor of the Zero Waste Initiative. A waste study done a few years ago by the Monroe County Solid Waste Districts found that over 40% of the waste coming through the waste transfer station is compostable. And so there's a huge amount there that we can save on waste, on waste transportation, on waste processing if we compost locally. And just to underline this, it's, it's, you can never repeat it enough. The IPCC in October of 2018 stated that we must cut greenhouse gas emissions by 45% by 2030. And the clock is still ticking. And we, we need to cut greenhouse gas emissions by 100% and that's zero by 2050, less than 30 years from now. This timeline is not put on hold by COVID. As a matter of fact, an international study done recently by the University of Leeds says, unless large-scale structural interventions like a significant switch away from fossil fuels are implemented, these minor changes due to COVID will not affect Earth's climate. In fact, the researchers found, even if lockdown measures continue in some fashion around the world until the end of 2021, more than a year and a half total, global temperatures will only be roughly 0.018 degrees Fahrenheit lower than expected by 2030. And we need to cut them by 45% if we want to have a habitable planet. So the urgency is still with us and I think there are some good steps in this budget to address that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandberg?
Thank you. Mr. Crowley, often the work of the public sector goes underthanked. I want to particularly thank you for stepping up in the leadership during these unprecedented times. You have been very facile, your team that you work with, I think is a very harmonious crew with all the different aspects of the, the, the assets of the city that you manage. In particular, I do want to once again speak in behalf of the arts culture in our community, which is such an integral part of what makes Bloomington Bloomington. While the pandemic is probably hitting the performing arts harder than anyone with respect to not being able to have live audiences in place anytime soon, but with this surprising gift of the Waldron Art Center coming back into our stewardship, this gives us time to really plan for how to build back better, which is one of my favorite phrases from Governor Cuomo, and get organized for the time when we are going to be able to have performing arts again. I also appreciated the comment from the spokesperson from WFHB, which is very much a part of what we hope to maintain in the Waldron going forward. So thanks to everyone, as councilmember Scambalary said, from the arts community, you are, are a very active group and we hear you. I heard you loud and clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other final comment? Oh, councilmember Rala, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm in absolute agreement with all of my colleagues' statements. I just wanted to add that as we go forward with sort of an unknown way of determining how this pandemic is going to develop, I, I think a couple of things are apparent. One thing is that if, if we place emphasis on a local food economy, we can capture dollars that would otherwise be siphoned away. And so that's one way of rebuilding the economy is to focus on capturing and recirculating wealth. And I also wanted to mention that in following up on Councilmember Piedmont Smith's comments about the, about climate, it's clear that the global economy is very precarious and fragile. And by developing our local economy based on things like local food, we can cut carbon emissions significantly. And I think relocalization is going to be a way forward in the future that's gonna tread much light, more lightly on the planet. So your efforts are really very helpful in regard, Mr. Crowley, and your, your department. And I appreciate them and I fully support your budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Looking for Han. Okay, being done, I think we're ready for the clerk to call roll on a due process, due path recommendation.
Hey, councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Dane.
I'm sorry?
Abstain.
Oh, thank you. Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rala?
Yes.
Scambalary?
Yes.
And Rosam Barker?
Yes. Okay. Okay, thank you very much to Mr. Crowley and the ESD team tonight. Good seeing you all. See you again soon.
Next, we have Community and Family Resources with Beverly Calendar Anderson. Good evening or good night now.
Yeah, well, yeah, good evening.
Getting late.
I'm going to start off. Yeah, I'm going to start off by apologizing for my blue hue. I have every light in my house on, so I don't know why I'm blue. But it's me. So there you go. All right, good evening. I am Beverly Calendar Anderson, Director of the Community and Family Resources Department, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to present the department's 2021 budget request this evening. The Community and Family Resources Department helps to improve quality of life in Bloomington by coordinating programs and services designed to strengthen community engagement and to increase the overall community capacity to address social issues. The CFRD staff work collaboratively with one another, other departments, and community partners to help build a strong and vital community. I want to take this opportunity to thank the CFRD staff, not only for all the hard work they do under normal circumstances, but for their flexibility and extreme creativity in continuing to deliver programs and services during this unprecedented time. CFRD operates with nine full-time staff and currently with two interns. Our programs include the Bloomington Volunteer Network that celebrated its 40th anniversary earlier this year, Latino Outreach Programs, the Safe and Civil City Program, and we provide support to six commissions, the Council for Community Accessibility, the Monroe County Domestic Violence Coalition, and the Safety, Civility, and Justice Community Coordinating Council. In addition to the programs just mentioned, in the past few months, CFRD has given leadership to anti-racism, equity and inclusion initiatives, the Emergency Social Services Working Group, and the Monroe County 2020 Census Complete Count Committee. Now I'll share a few updates from our 2020 budget goals. In the area of safety, civility, and justice, last year, we implemented the After Hours Ambassador Pro, well, Ambassador Program and hired Jenna Whitaker as our first After Hours Ambassador. Jenna recently relocated to another state with her family, so the position is currently open, and we are in the process of reviewing applications in order to fill that position. Related to that, the Volunteer After Hours Ambassador Corps, we'd hoped to begin, is on hold until we get the After Hours Ambassador position filled. We continue to monitor the 30 recommendations from the Safety, Civility, and Justice Task Force. However, we had intended to implement three new recommendations this year, and they are on hold so far. What was not stated in our 2020 goals, but because of COVID-19 became essential for our department's involvement, was working with the Social Services Working Group appointed by Mayor Hamilton in March of this year. This group helped to assure residents experiencing homelessness had an appropriate place to isolate if they became symptomatic or tested positive for COVID, that families experiencing food insecurity were able to access emergency food supplies, and that childcare was available for essential workers who were needed to help keep our community running. I want to take an opportunity to thank our partners at Bloomington Hospital Foundation, Community Foundation of Bloomington Monroe County, United Way of Monroe County, and the wonderful nonprofit service providers who worked countless hours, sometimes risking their own health, to make sure the basic needs of our, our city's most vulnerable residents were addressed. In the area of diversity, equity, and inclusion, we're continuing to work with the Human Resources Department to assure a diverse and qualified pool of applicants for all city position openings by sharing employment opportunities with organizations serving racial and religious minorities and through all of our social media platforms. We're also assisting the Human Resources Department in making available mandatory implicit bias and anti-racism training for all city staff. Most recently, CFRD hosted a de-escalation training, which was available to all employees and our nonprofit partners. 127 people took advantage of this training. 61 of them were city staff, and 66 came from 34 nonprofit organizations in the community. Also in the area of diversity, we held a Young Women's Leadership Summit this past fall as part of the ongoing Safe and Civil City programming. The summit was attended by 107 middle and high school female students of color. In the area of engagement, because, because of COVID-19, many nonprofit agencies have reduced their use of direct service volunteers. However, the need for skill-based volunteers that are able to work remotely or serve on boards and committee, committees are still needed. Lucy Shake, the Director of the Bloomington Volunteer Network, continues to do outreach to individuals and businesses to encourage more pro bono and skill-based volunteering. And of course, boards and commissions are another way residents can become involved in making a difference in our community. As stated earlier, CFRD staffs six commissions, the Council for Community Accessibility, the Monroe County Domestic Violence Coalition. So I want to take this opportunity, council members, to thank you for being very intentional about making appointments to these boards and commissions quickly. That really helps our, the work of those boards and commissions move smoothly and without very much interruption. So thank you for that. Working with the city clerk's office to develop an onboarding program for all new commission and board members has been one of the projects that was suspended because of the pandemic. However, we hope to get back to it before the end of the year. And a few highlights from the, the work of CFRD commissions include the inaugural Outstanding Young Woman of the Year awards that were presented by the Commission on the Status of Black Males. And they presented those in February along with their annual Young Black Male Leader of the, of the Year Award during Black History Month. The Commission on the Status of Children and Youth completed the youth participatory budgeting process and held a vote for all middle and high school students in the community. The project, however, that they, that came out as number one, presented some very insurmountable barriers. And so those young people continue to work on this project, and now they are working to implement the project that received the second highest number of votes. Both the Commission on the Status of Black Males and the Commission on the Status of Children and Youth are staffed by Shatoya Moss, the city's Safe and Civil City Director. The Commission on Hispanic and Latino Affairs, which is staffed by Latino Outreach Coordinator Josefa Luz, will continue to recognize Hispanic and Latino middle, high school, and college students moving to new levels in school or graduating during Latinx Heritage Month, and that will take place in September and October of this year. And in addition to handling our department's finances, Sue Owens also staffs the Commission on Aging and the Commission on the Status of Women. Unfortunately, the Woman of the Year Luncheon had to be canceled in March, but recipients of this year's awards will be recognized on Women's Equality Day, August 26, in a virtual celebration that can be accessed via Facebook. And there will be more information about this on our social media platforms and through news releases. The Council for Community Accessibility is staffed by Michael Shermus, who is also the liaison for the Martin Luther King Birthday, Martin Luther King Birthday Holiday Celebration. And the CCA, Council for Community Accessibility, is continuing to survey businesses and other public facilities for accessibility. The council is also currently working with the Elections Board and Stone Belt Self Advocates to survey 36 polling places in the county to assure voting is accessible for all of our residents. In addition to the staff members I've mentioned, I want to give a shout out to Marissa Parscott, the awesome CFRD Office Manager, who helps keep us all organized and moving like a well-oiled machine. Now I'll talk a little bit about our 2021 budget goals. In the area of engagement, we are hoping to develop a strategy, well, we're developing a strategy, to increase communication and collaboration between nonprofit agencies and grassroots helpers to encourage shared resources and strategies resulting in enhanced service to residents in need. We've also assumed the coordination and administration of Helping Bloomington Monroe, which is an online resource for people in need. Then we're also transforming our nonprofit board development training to an online platform, which will help train residents who are interested in serving on boards of nonprofit organizations. This online platform will allow us to accommodate additional participants because of the flexibility of the, of the platform. In the area of safety, civility, and justice, we are, will continue, go on and develop that downtown ambassador corps. We will start by recruiting 10 volunteers to assist our After Hours Ambassador to monitor various sectors of the downtown for cleanliness, noise, if there are persons in need that are downtown. And this will result in a more engaged community committed to a clean and safe and just downtown for everyone. We are developing a collaborative team of diversity, equity, and inclusion specialists from not the city, Indiana University, Ivy Tech, MCCSC and area businesses. And we're doing this in order to coordinate programming and activities, but also to provide support for one another and to ensure transparent and open communication. And we will be providing administrative support to the community's Racial Justice Task Force, which is being formed as a result of the city's work with the Moore's College of Law's Divided Community Project. And I believe that was mentioned earlier this week. In the area of diversity, we will be coordinating a black male summit for, in the fall of 2021 for a minimum of 75 middle and high school age male students of color, as well as another Young Women's Leadership Summit in the spring for a minimum of 120 female students of color that are in middle and high school. We're work, we will be working with the Department of Economic and Sustainable Development to coordinate a three-day black and brown arts festival. This will be our second, I believe, and it will highlight the works of a minimum of 40 local artists of color in the visual and performing arts. And we'll continue our work with the Spanish-speaking community and for the Spanish-speaking community by providing English to Spanish and Spanish to English translations for nonprofit agencies, city departments, and Spanish-speaking residents. And we'll continue to respond to direct service and resource and referral calls from our Spanish-speaking residents as well. And now I'll highlight for you a few of the goals of our commissions. They have many, but can't do them all. So the Commission on Aging will host a minimum of three workshops or public events on the lifetime community concept. That, that's a concept that they champion. The Commission on the Status of Black Males will advocate for inclusion, equity, and justice for black males through a social media, letter writing, and guest editorial campaign. The Commission on the Status of Children and Youth will recognize four area children and youth with swagger awards in the fall. And swagger stands for students who act generously, grow, and earn respect. I think I got that right. And the Commission on Hispanic and Latino Affairs will connect members of the Hispanic and Latino community who are unable to access federally funded resources to local resources that provide for food, childcare, housing, and personal and personal health and safety needs to ensure a decent quality of life for them. And in addition to the annual MLK Birthday Celebration, the MLK Holiday Committee, Birthday Holiday Committee will coordinate a commemoration of Dr. King's assassination on or about April 4th, which is the anniversary of his assassination. The Commission on the Status of Women plans to increase the presence of women of color and men at the Women's Leadership Development Event by including more diversity on their planning committee and among the presenters. And the Commission, the Council on Community Accessibility will continue their decal program to new and existing built businesses for accessibility compliance. And the Monroe County Domestic Violence Coalition publishes two updates, and they will continue to do this, two updates, domestic violence statistics in Monroe County. The Community and Family Resources Department's general fund request, oh my gosh, excuse me, just a minute, our general fund request is $1,069,072. This is an increase of $252,265 or 31%. Our personnel request, as you can see, has decreased by $3,635, but our category three request increased by $255,750 to a total of $296,820. The significant increases in category three are travel, which is a $1,000 increase, and that represents travel for conferences, $1,600 in hardware and software maintenance for the purchase of renewal licenses for software and equipment we may need. And then in the grants line, there's an increase of $251,000. And that primarily relates to the transfer of downtown outreach funding from the Bloomington Police Department into Community and Family Resources, and it also includes $1,000 of increased support to CFRD commission projects. And this is the chart outlining our budget requests, and you can see our general fund budget request. And so you can see where that goes, and there's a 31% increase overall. Our 2021 Recover Funding request is $50,000, and it will be used to provide programming and support for vulnerable populations that include, but aren't limited to people who are experiencing homelessness, substance misuse disorder, food insecurity, or mental and emotional health concerns. And it's charted out, and it's all in our, in our grants line right now. And so this is our 2021 budget request, and it reflects, we think it reflects increases that align with the stated goals for the Department of Engagement, Safety, Civility, and Justice, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, and Support to our Commissions. So I want to thank you for your consideration of our 2021 budget request. And of course, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much, Ms. Calendar Anderson. We'll go right into council question. Okay. Council member Scamble Larry?
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Calendar Anderson. Could you say more when you get a, get a second about the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Specialist? I think that's a really intriguing role, and I'd be interested in hearing more about your plans and your vision for that group.
I don't think I said anything about a Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Specialist.
Oh, I thought I saw it on a slide.
No, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion is one of our goal areas, but there is, I mean, we all actually work in that area, but there's not a specific person with that title.
Okay, I'm going to go find what I was referring to.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, council member P. Mont Smith?
Yes, I wanted to ask about the, the $251,000 increase in the grants line. And you said that was, most of that is for the grant program funds for social service providers who work with the downtown resource officers. Did I understand that correctly?
So I called it the downtown resource outreach funding, and a lot, and, and that is what it's been used for previously through the police department. Some time ago, it was in hand when the downtown resource officer positions were created, it moved to the police department. Now that CFRD is doing so much more front and center work with those agencies and, and those clients, we're moving it to CFRD. But yeah, that's what it is, and, and it will continue to be used in that way.
Okay, so it's for social service agencies that work in collaboration with the DROs to help people downtown?
So it's not all specifically for social service agencies. It's used to support programming, to support downtown outreach. So it could be DR, the DRO-related, it could be agency-related, it could be programming internally that's being done in that way, but that's, that's what it's for.
Okay, and then the, in the budget package that we got last week, in that line, it says the grant line increase is primarily related to the transfer of park the grant line increase is primarily related to the transfer of parking meter funding?
Yes.
And includes increased support to CFRD commissions. So is this? What does what do parking meters have to do with it?
So I see that Jeff has has popped on, and I will let him answer that.
Those funds have been funded out of the parking meter fund fairly early on. Originally, they were in the hand department and several years ago, I believe it's three or four years now, that was a use eligible use of funds. And since primarily parking meters are downtown, it gets funded out of there, it's $250,000. So CFRD will oversee the use of those funds out of the parking meter fund.
Okay, thank you.
Other question? Okay, being done, I think we can move to, okay, council member, I don't know why I saw that delay everyone, Rallo, and then Councilmember Candelary, go ahead after Rallo.
Yes, thank you. Beverly, I'm always impressed by the tremendous amount of work that you undertake. And I'm sure it's challenged by our current COVID problem. I wondered, looking forward, what how do you, how do you see? Could you could you briefly outline some of the challenges for the most vulnerable communities? If this persists?
Certainly, I think what we've seen in the past will will continue to be, we will, we will need to make sure that there is adequate and safe childcare for essential workers, I mean, who aren't able to stay home with their children. We'll we'll need to make sure that those kids are able to be educated online and that they have not only connectivity but equipment in order to do online classes, food provision and and thinking about, you know, people who are experiencing homelessness or on the bubble, you know, shelter becomes an issue. And so not only for those, you know, sort of in the isolation shelter where, you know, they're homeless and they experience symptoms, but also who benefited from the eviction, the eviction moratorium and now have all that rent due. And so, I mean, you know, so those kinds of things, anytime you're on the bubble, any little thing can make that bubble burst. And and so those those are really the the kinds of things that we're looking at and continuing to work with our community partners to make sure that they're addressed.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Yes, there are lots of stressors coming at people and it's I think you're right. I think we we still have some tough times ahead. And anyway, I look forward to hearing more reports from you so that we can act whatever way we can on the council.
Thanks.
Councilmember Candelary?
Thank you. I found it.
Okay.
This is on slide number nine, the wonderful West Kirk Charlie Markey. Develop a collaborative team of diversity, equity and inclusion specialists from IU, Ivy Tech, MCCSC and area businesses by March 2021.
Yes.
To coordinate programs activities. Can you just say more about that?
Sure. So so each one of those organizations and several and several businesses in town have DEI Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Specialists as part of their staff. A lot of times we operate in silos. We we do what we do with the city or the county or IU or MCCSC. And so the goal is to bring us together so that we can do more collaborative programming, be more supportive of one another, because this isn't easy work. And especially in the past few months, people who are DEI specialist or do work in this area have been called on a lot and and have felt very stressed and very lonely. And so some of that is happening informally already, and so we want to formalize that process. And and again, when there are programs that are going to help the city, they're also going to help MCCSC and they'll help IU and Ivy Tech. And so if we're all talking to one another, it's it's just we're all seeing it from the same same book.
So it's it's largely a group of positions that exist already, but you would be convening and helping coordinate all they do.
Yes.
And it's just, I think it's an interesting question. We may have organizations that would like to have a DEI specialist but don't have one. I would, I would guess they can reach out to you too, and you could help guide them in how that even can come about and how they could create such a position?
I I would do my best.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Sam?
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Calendar Anderson, for that presentation. And if folks don't know, you do so much more than what you do at the city, in particularly out in our community and our struggle for social justice. But I'll tag along on what Councilmember Rallo was talking about a little bit with many of our challenges due to the pandemic, in particular along the lines of daycare, online learning equipment. There were some some housing issues, I think, that you worked on earlier. But you also mentioned with our community partners. So can you talk with us a little bit about what some of those community partnerships are? And I know there's many, you probably can't get to all of them. But what I think is important is that we as a city, with our funds, we support and we work in partnership to get a bigger bang for our buck. And I'm also thinking about the Stride Center, which you may not have anything at this particular, I'm sure you have some involvement. But can you talk about some of those? I know you do, but can you talk about some of those community partnerships that you alluded to earlier?
Well, certainly, certainly the Social Service Working Group that I mentioned earlier in my remarks that involved United Way of Monroe County and the Community Foundation of Bloomington, Monroe County and Bloomington Hospital Foundation, they they have been great partners of working with the various nonprofits in the in the community and convening them. And so each one of us sort of took a sector and we convened it. And so, for instance, I work with the isolation shelter and we meet weekly and someone works with the food folks that are emergency food providers and someone else works with folks providing childcare and just making sure that not only did those agencies have what they needed in order to provide the service, but also that their services were being publicized to the people who needed them the most. And so, and and then we meet as a team. And so just to make sure we're on track. So they, I would, I would definitely say thank you to them, all the folks connected with the Stride Center, which, for anyone that doesn't know, is our Crisis Diversion Center that will be opening on the 24th of this month. We've been working with that group. The nonprofit agencies in this community are second to none. And when I say folks put themselves on the line to provide for people in need, they truly did that. And and there are others, I mean, you know, there, there are nonprofit or organizations that sprung up like the Food Train and Monroe County Mutual Aid did, and how housing for homeless, yeah, housing for homeless. Like those are, they just sort of sprung up grassroots because there were so many things that were needed. And so one of the things about this community is that when there, I got you, Steve, when there's a need, like people will, they will give.
Thank you.
Other council member question? I have one. Can you tell us more about the Safety, Civility and Justice Task Force? I think, I think you said it's a goal that is getting moved to 2021. And like, what's the role of the task force? Who would be on it? How how does somebody get on it?
So the Safety, Civility and Justice Task Force came out of the Safety, Civility and Justice Initiative that started about four years ago. That task force made 30 recommendations to the city to implement. That task force doesn't meet anymore. Now we have the Safety, Civility and Justice Community Coordinating Council, which sort of oversees the implementation of those recommendations. And so we had recommendations like lighting and putting more activity in People's Park, and there there were 30 of them, so I can't remember them all. But so that's where that came from. So it's not an active task force anymore. One of my goals for this year was to continue to look downtown, especially along with that after-hours ambassador, to see if there were more safety, civility and justice recommendations that needed to be implemented. Because of course, now we're four, maybe four years out from when that Safety, Civility and Justice Task Force first started meeting. And so that's what's on hold is the additional three recommendations, but not the first 30.
I see. Okay, yes, thank you. Thank you. Any other council member question? Councilmember Flaherty?
I'll jump in. You got me thinking about task forces. There was a, there was a mention too of our work with the Divided Community Project, and I think a recommendation that came from that, which you mentioned in, I think, a press conference that was done recently, as well as tonight, the Racial Equity Task Force that I think is probably still in development stages. But I was wondering if you could tell us any more details about that, kind of in the same vein, you know, how how it will be formed, how many people who who will decide on who's on it and and what types of things will they report, timelines, that sort of thing, if you if you know them.
So the Divided Community Projects, so I don't have a lot of time. So there were two groups. It was the Divided Community Projects Bridges Initiative, which was people coming to consultants coming to Bloomington, talking to Bloomington residents, they gave a report. Then there was the Divided Community Projects Academy Initiative, which sent a team for training in Chicago. So we've combined all of those recommendations. One of those was the Racial Justice Task Force. We wanted to be probably about 15 or 20 people that we've come up with that. We have not decided how they will be selected yet. What we want, what we have said that we want is that it is diverse, that it is representative of a of a vast cross-section of this community. We're not really giving it, you know, a mandate, except because they have to come up with their own goals, because they will be representing the community. But it, looking at it as a two-year task force. And you should be hearing from me pretty soon about some of the makeup. I have to go back to the to the team with some ideas, but I don't, so we don't have how it will exactly, how we'll get our members yet, but we're working on that.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Sorry, I was muted. I thought I unmuted. Any other question? Okay, looks like we can move to public comment.
Okay, it looks like first up is Sam Dove. If you can go ahead, I think you're unmuted.
Mr. Dove, it's a little hard to understand you, but if you could type your comment in, we can have our meeting host read that out loud as well. And anyone is, is, okay, okay.
Okay.
Okay, thanks for your comment. And I I think I should repeat, since some people have joined the meeting, if you would like to make a comment, just raise your hand and we will unmute you.
Okay, it looks like our next next comment comes from James Sanders. Mr. Sanders, if you'd like to go ahead, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Good evening. I hope everyone is having a great night, besides the long meeting. I am the Chair of the Dr. Martin Luther King Celebration Commission, and I am on the Commission on the Status of Black Males. And I would just like to say that I'm very grateful for the Safe and Civil City Department. I've had the opportunity to experience and be involved in many of the programmings, including the the Black Male Youth Summit, the Black Woman Youth Summit. As part, also with other events, we do the Million Father Marks, we do the Dr. MLK Program at the beginning of the the year. And it's always something productive and it it's always something enlightening. And I think that's very important considering our current current racial climate. And I was just continuing to encourage this department to continue to do these great things and engage the community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Here we go. Next, we have Jaquita Roberts. You can go ahead.
Hi there. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Jaquita Joy Roberts. I've been in the community for 20 plus years at this point, and I'm a parent of two, a black son and a black daughter. And I just want to first thank Ms. Beverly Calendar Anderson and Shatoya Demoss for everything that they do in the community. I know my children have certainly benefited from the programs. You know, I know that you all have talked about food insecurities and homelessness and things like that. But, you know, they've also made sure to, you know, remember the people, the students for their mental and their emotional health and well-being as well. I feel like a lot of the programs that they have put together, such as the Young Women's Leadership Summit that my daughter participated in and loved. She's now a freshman at IU and eager to be a part of it on the other side and come back and give back and be a voice to help lift uplift and and really build confidence that she experienced herself. You know, it was really inspiring. It's it's very motivating and encouraging to see all that they do in the community. So I I absolutely am one that would stay up until this late hour to be sure that my voice is also heard in support of everything that they are wanting to do and planning to do. I am fully in support of of every part of their their plan and their proposals. So I just wanted to, you know, definitely thank them again. I really am grateful as well. I join in some of the others, Jim Sims and and the others that have mentioned their names. And and I will use this time to say that again and again. Thank you for all that you all do. Continue the the work and I'm here in support.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have McQueer Reese.
Hi, everyone. My name is McQueer Reese. Thank you for the introduction. Thank you for this time. I wanted to echo and share that I'm really thankful for the Community and Family Resource Department that champions diversity, equity and inclusion, because it definitely is something that is infused in a lot of different areas and a lot of different spaces. You have, so I work for the Kelly School of Business, and I was able to partner with the Community and Family Resource Department, as well as Safe and Civil City, to ensure safety and inclusion efforts from the community to our students in the Kelly School of Business. They did a Cody, a town hall over in Kelly School, over in Kelly, over in Kelly. And the students were able to learn more about what the community is doing as it relates to equity and and inclusion as in justice based off of the different incidences that took place in our community. So I just want to say thank you for that. And I also champion the work that the community is, Community and Family Resource Department is doing. And I want to say we're we'll continue to partner. Even the our Dean, our chairperson, they've always, they've been really excited about this partnership. And so we look forward to continuing to do that. However, the Kelly Office of Diversity Initiatives specifically has reached out and have benefited from the work that they've been doing. So thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment.
Okay, it looks like next we have a statement from Mr. Dove that Mr. Lucas is going to read.
Yes, Sam's, Sam's comment is, why do people need to park on the street at 5:00 PM? People are not allowed to park on the street at 8:00 AM. People need to wait to park on the street. And Sam, if there's any other portion I've missed, just send me another chat. And if we can't get it into public comment, we can also pass written messages forward to the council members after the meeting tonight.
Thank you for that comment. Okay, that that looks like it.
That looks like everything.
Okay, let's go back to council members. Follow-up questions?
I'm sorry. It looks like we might have one more comment.
Okay.
And Dr. Winston, did you have your hand raised? I'm going to unmute you if that was the case.
Yes, I did. Thank you. I wasn't sure if you were seeing me if I were doing, if I was doing it properly. My apologies.
That's fine. I promise.
My name is Marke Winston and I'm an Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction for the Monroe County Community School Corporation. And I'm just excited to be here this evening. Really wanted to just speak just very briefly and succinctly on the Community and Family Resource Department in expressing my support, our collective support from MCCSC on so many levels. I kind of jotted down several comments, but most recently, we partnered on the Real Talk Student Series. And that was an amazing opportunity for us to be able to reach out directly in response to the George Floyd killing and to provide a form for us to be able to center young people's voice. We worked with middle school students as well as high school students. And the fact that we were able to work with Ms. Moss in pulling that service together, it was a five-week program that we did during the midst of the summer. So that's just one example. I especially appreciated and was excited to hear Ms. Callender Anderson talk about the diversity, equity, and inclusion collaboration. We were already doing a lot of that with, with the department here. But I'm excited to hear that it's going to continue forward. And by March 2021, that there's some timelines to kind of strengthen that partnership because she's right in so many ways that it can be lonely work, it's hard work, it's emotionally draining work. And it's been traumatizing, to be perfectly honest with you, in recent weeks and months. I want to give a shout out to the work that has been done with the Million Father March with us starting school online this year. We weren't able to do it for the first year in several years, but nonetheless, we're very appreciative of that. The Black Male Summit, the Girls' Leadership Academy, I've had a chance to participate in both of those events. And I have to tell you that the impact on our young people has been immeasurable and it's been transformative. And so those programs and many others are very beneficial to our young people. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment.
Okay, it looks like we also have a statement from Abby Aang that Mr. Lucas is going to read.
Yes, and I'll just remind all the other folks on the call, if you have any issues connecting to the audio or can't otherwise make a comment and would like us to read, read one out loud, just send that over chat. So Abby Aang says, "The Monroe County Mutual Aid would like to also thank the Community and Family Resources Department for the work they're doing. We're very grateful for the opportunities and assistance they've offered to members of the community facing the COVID crisis. We couldn't do our work in that group without you."
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other public comment?
I'm doing one last scan and I think.
Okay, I know.
Don't see any hands.
Okay. Okay, council questions. I see something popped up there. Final comment from council members? Council member Scambalory?
Thank you. Just a couple of things I want to cheer for and one I really want to emphasize. I really miss the Woman of the Year luncheon this year. I look forward to that returning. You win the award for swagger for the best acronym that we've heard in such a long time so far. So thank you for that. And you just touched on this really briefly, but I think it's so critical. You talked about studying and ensuring the accessibility of polling places in Monroe County. And I am so grateful for that. This fall's election, seems like every election is talked about as being the most important of our lifetime. This one is critical and voter accessibility is critical. So thank you for taking that on.
Thank you.
Other council member comment, Council member Sandberg, sorry.
Thank you. And once again, Ms. Callender Anderson, your leadership over the past several months has just been so appreciated. When I think of your department, I think, and of all these wonderful comments, all the thanks that you're getting, just says that you are a department that collaborates. And that is such an important word when you are trying to reduce some of the silos and reaching out to others in the community that are sharing our missions and helping folks in need regardless of if it's the pandemic or the economic crisis. And you are a collaborator. And for that, I appreciate you and everyone in your department that does this critically important work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council member Sim.
Thank you. One of the things that we as citizens expect from our city are our basic city services. And many times we think of trash removal, we think of water and sewage, we think of snow removal, we think of a lot of different things. I'm here tonight to say that the Community and Family Resource Department is absolutely one of the most critical, I think, and what I consider to be basic city services that helps our community through the boards and commissions that they oversee, through many of the diversity and inclusion and racial and social justice issues. The community partnerships that are fostered with many of our public service and nonprofits throughout the community. And they have a wonderful effect through these relationships, through these collaborations, through these partnerships to have a very, very positive effect on equity in our community and help create a better culture, a better environment, and work on what we like to call our community climate. So I am thankful. I will support CFRD's budget this evening. And I, like many of my colleagues, I really, really wish we could double the amount that your budgeting is requested tonight, but we can't do that. But I am so thankful and keep up the good work and let us all know we can continue to make our city better.
Thank you.
Any other final comment? Council member Rallo?
It's difficult to follow Jim Sims because of the eloquence. But I think that your department's really essential in the best of times. And I think that going forward, it's going to be very, very critical for us to obtain effects of economic downturn and endemic, having vulnerable populations. And and so your role is really, really critical. And I know you'll be communicating that. So let's hope for the best. And I would certainly be in favor of increasing your budget to meet needs because there's certainly going to be more queue as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, good comments all around. Anyone else? Okay, Clerk Baldwin, I think if you would call Rallo for a due path recommendation.
Absolutely. Let's see. Council member Baldwin?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo? Okay.
I think he might have, yeah.
Okay, Scambalory?
Yep.
Rosenbacher?
Yes.
And Sims?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Callender Anderson, for your presentation.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, up next, we have Parks and Recreation. We should have, okay, I see. Oh, right. Uh-oh, there you are. Okay. Paula McDevitt, Director of Parks and Rec, ready for your presentation. You have twenty minutes. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Paula McDevitt and I am the Director of the Parks and Recreation Department. And I am pleased to present the 2021 Parks and Recreation Budget. I'm joined this evening by Becky Higgins, our Recreation Services Division Director, John Turnbull, our Sports Services Division Director, and Dave Williams, our Operations and Development Division Director. I'm also supported by the Board of Park Commissioners and Israel Herrera, who is also joining us this evening. The Parks and Recreation Department strives to provide the highest quality parks, recreation services, and green space to enhance the quality of life in our community. We maintain over twenty-three hundred acres of property, playing fields, courts, golf course, ice arena, thirty-eight miles of trail, thirty-four parks and twenty-eight playgrounds, two pools, a brand-new spray pad, and three community centers. We are supported by the Bloomington Parks Foundation, who run a scholarship program that in 2019 awarded over $12,000 in program scholarships to eighty-two children. The program's services and assets are managed by fifty-three dedicated and talented full-time employees. These employees are able to accomplish the department goals with the support of fifty-three full-time equivalent seasonal employees, which in 2019 equaled four hundred and fifty-four individuals. The department works in four divisions, Administration, Operations, Recreation, and Sports. Our major initiatives are sports programs and events, natural resource management and sustainability efforts, asset management, health and well-being, equity and access to parks and facilities, general obligation park fund projects, and bicentennial bond-funded projects and gateways. We are able to accomplish major initiatives with over a hundred and fifty-two contracts.
Sorry, Paula, it looks like we had an issue with the presentation. I don't know if you could share your screen again.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. We are able to accomplish major initiatives with over a hundred and fifty-two contract service agreements and thirty-two community partnership agreements. The department was nationally recognized by the National Recreation and Park Association as a 2018 Gold Medal Award recipient for excellence in the field of Parks and Recreation Management. In addition, the department has been accredited by NRPA since 2001 and has maintained accreditation status every five years since then.
Sorry, Paula, I don't know why. It looks like somebody's able to either draw on your presentation. I'm not exactly sure what's happening, but maybe you could just continue and we'll try to, going on.
Just going to move my camera over here and touch myself up if I can have a few minutes.
Are the slides also available online right now if folks want to follow along? I know council members got them today. Okay.
Okay, can I just proceed?
Yes.
Picking back up on the accreditation, the department's national accreditation through NRPA requires a master plan. And five-year master plans shape the goals and priorities of the department to match community interests. The current master plan covers 2016 through the 2020 timeframe. Currently underway with Troyer Group Consultants, we are working on our next master plan. And this master plan will involve a community interest survey, stakeholder and public input meetings, analysis and maintenance, recreation, sports, and administration delivery system, master plan document, and strategic action plan for programs and operations. The effect of COVID on Parks and Recreation, since 2008, Bloomington Parks and Recreation has emphasized the role Parks and Recreation has in public health. And while this has been our practice, COVID-19 has elevated our resources and responses to meet the public health crisis. Our local parks, trails, and open green spaces have always served as places where people find respite, seek peace, and are physically active. During this time of COVID-19 uncertainty, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention has identified mental health as a top concern during high stress and anxiety-producing global public health emergencies. The Parks Department's resources are needed now more than ever. And we believe that parks, trails, and open green spaces can continue to be used in a safe manner that allows people to enjoy the mental and physical health benefits these spaces provide. The impact of COVID-19 on the Parks and Recreation Department has resulted in over a hundred and twenty programs, events, leads, and volunteer opportunities canceled to date. In response, park staff have produced over sixty virtual programs, customer service staff taking calls, while operations staff have safely opened outdoor spaces for health orders and protocols. Parks and, the park staff have been incredible in their abilities to react, plan, and facilitate COVID-19 health orders to keep our community safe. Staff never stopped their work but responded to meet community need, whether it was opening facilities for fabric mask making, delivering eleven thousand meals to children during the summer months, providing childcare safely, and maintaining parks and trails from record number of visitors seeking outdoor spaces for relief from COVID-19 stress. These efforts have been unfolding since March and continue today for the foreseeable future as we recognize and facilitate the responsibility we have as a department to the Bloomington community. The program revenue has been impacted. To date, our general fund program revenue is down thirty-two percent, and our non-reverting program revenue is down forty-eight percent. The department's non-reverting fund was created to serve as an enterprise fund, allowing maximum flexibility for the department to offer services in response to trends and customer demand while minimizing reliance on the general fund tax base. The Board of Park Commissioners review and approve the annual non-reverting budget. Board of Park Commissioners and staff annually review, recommend, approve program fees based on a pricing pyramid and a cost recovery goals for each program area. The lower the cost recovery goal, the more reliance is placed on the general fund. The higher the cost recovery goal, less reliance is placed on the general fund as the program fees fund the program. For example, Banneker Community Center, which has a high community benefit, has a low cost recovery goal of twenty percent, which accounts for their reliance on the general fund to operate, facility, and run programs. On the opposite end or at the tip of the pyramid, Golf Services has a highly individual benefit and therefore has a cost recovery goal of eighty-five percent. Fees charged at the golf course produce revenue projections in 2021 to be seven hundred and twenty-five thousand to allow us to break even plus or minus, and of course, is always weather dependent. The Twin Lakes Recreation Center was purchased using a revenue bond in May 2009. And through a citizen survey and a special citizen survey for people over fifty years of age, they indicated a need for an indoor health and wellness sport and recreation space. The TLRC offers an adaptable area for a wide range of activities with movable court dividers that create an expansive area for sports competitions, special events, or expo space. A variety of insurance-based memberships and programming targeting seniors has elevated the total number of senior members to five hundred. In sustainability and climate change practices can be seen throughout the Operations, Sports, and Recreation Divisions. Most noticeably are the solar panels at six park sites and six facilities. At the Switchyard Park Pavilion, we use the Solar Edge Monitoring Dashboard to measure the environmental benefits of the solar panels at this location. And in addition, Parks Department staff, including the city landscaper, the urban forester, the natural resources coordinator and manager, our health and wellness coordinator, Banneker coordinator, and the landscaping foreperson are the Parks Climate Sustainability Action Team who work collaboratively with ESD's Assistant Director of Sustainability, representing the work Parks does with addressing climate change and sustainability. Solar panel graph indicates the energy savings since the installation of solar panels at park and facility sites. Total savings in 2018 was a little over thirty thousand dollars and total savings in 2019 was for a little over forty-four thousand. Trails, trails, and more trails. The 2015 Citizen Interest Survey The 2015 Citizen Interest Survey indicated the community's support for established trails and request for more trails. This map illustrates the progress we've made in connecting our trail system. While we don't count trail users, we know by overflowing trailhead parking lots, the increased emphasis on biking and walking, and now most recently, people seeking outdoor spaces for COVID-19 physical activity, trails are the backbone to our park system. The Switchyard Park Master Plan Vision Statement reads, boldly transform an industrial legacy site into a signature urban park through innovative design, forward-thinking, and restorative environmental strategies. A park that recalls the site's unique history, reconnects the city, inspires social interaction and civic celebration, and catalyzes future development in the surrounding community. Essentially, and in summary, something for everyone. We were excited to begin construction in 2017, and in November 2019, we held a park rebuild celebration. We are in the final stages of completion with punch list items remaining. And we look forward to a fall park dedication yet this fall. The department's five-year capital improvement project maintains a five-year capital improvement project list. And while securing general fund capital improvement funding can be challenging from year to year, the Parks Commissioners have the ability every 16 years to approve the sale of general obligation park bond. And in 2016, the Board of Park Commissioners issued park district bonds to complete several significant capital improvement projects. Beginning in 2017 to 2021, we have $6.9 million to complete a significant capital improvement projects. Over 20 park locations and facilities have benefited from capital improvement projects, with the list shown as the most recent ones. I don't know that you can see the drone footage, or if you just have a black square. I have a drone footage of the Waldron Hill Buskirk Park improvements, which includes pavers in front of the stage, new lighting, and landscaping. In 2018, in celebration of Bloomington's bicentennial, a $10 million bicentennial bond was approved by the Board of Park Commissioners and City Council as an investment in our community's future generations. They include gateway projects, the Duke Energy Trail, which is currently under contract for design, the Griffey Loop Trail under design and working closely with CBU, contracted tree planting using identified available tree plots from the 2019 tree inventory, and Lower Cascades Park Trail Road Conversion Pilot Project currently underway. Just a few brief slides on our progress in 2020, and I'll start with Administration. As I mentioned, the master plan process has begun with 5,000 random city residents receiving postcards with their URL linked to a survey. The survey, the postcards went out on August 10th, and as of August 17th, 130 surveys have already been completed. The survey will be open until September 18th. The Community Relations Social Media Team with representatives from each division are coordinating both Facebook and Instagram posts, and during COVID-19 time has been spent with posting virtual programs. Highlights in all program areas in the Operations Division. In this time of year, the landscaping installation of native plants is very visible throughout the community. So far in 2020, a little over 6,000 seedlings and shrubs have been planted as part of the reuproot station project with more to come this fall. In the Recreation Division, noted on the slide are the five different program areas. And in the Community Garden Program area, the goal was to rent 30 of the 39 community garden beds at Switchyard Park. I'm happy to report that all 39 garden beds were rented with a waiting list. And in the Sports Division, youth sports had three tournaments scheduled but only held one due to COVID. And they currently have four outside groups renting outdoor youth facility field space. Turning now to the 2021 budget goals, and while your budget memo lists several goals per program area, I will be highlighting just a few. Beginning with Administration, we plan to apply and successfully complete the department's reaccreditation to ensure professional delivery of programs and services to the community. In Community Relations, we are going to increase the number of Facebook followers to 10,000. And the Social Media Team will continue to post and engage the community in virtual programs, program announcements, and pop-up programming. The Operations Division will begin with Parks, Facilities, and Trail Maintenance. They will be responding and maintaining to the $84 million in assets the department is responsible for. This work is generated through work requests submitted by the Recreation, Sports, and Operations Division. And several members in this division are able to manage in-house projects, which is a cost savings versus having to contract the work out. Landscaping is responsible for 7.23 acres of publicly owned property. And the drone footage that I don't know that you can see is of the Goat Farm Prairie. And in 2021, they will implement the plan for the five-acre expansion at this site. In Urban Forestry, they will continue to maintain over 19,000 trees on publicly owned property and will plant 500 trees with 50% near high priority planting area as identified in the 2019 Urban Forestry Inventory. In Natural Resources, we are very excited to work with Outer Spatial, who will design a trail map app specific to Bloomington Parks to help share recreation information with the public. The goal is to connect and engage with more park users using innovative mobile technology. And if the cemeteries will repair 50 monuments at Rose Hill and White Oak and install 13 custom section markers at Rose Hill Cemetery. Moving to the Recreation Division, we'll start with Banneker Community Center that will continue the development of the Cultural Hub Initiative by securing free partnerships with community organizations. This initiative will now include a nutrition component thanks to an $85,000 two-year grant award to Banneker by the National Parks and Recreation Association and Walmart. This grant was awarded to only 15 departments nationally, of which we were one. The 2015 Citizen Survey and our most recent city survey told us that our community like our community events and they want more. So to that end, we will hold a minimum of six concerts at Switchyard Park. The opening of Switchyard Park despite COVID-19 challenges has the staff ready to program and welcome visitors near and far. To help facility rentals in the pavilion, we'll create a pavilion walkthrough video and activate Switchyard Parks with new and existing events. The inclusive recreation area will serve the department in its entirety through ADA consultation, as well as to promote year-round inclusion through social media, inclusive brochure distribution, and outreach to disability-focused agencies. And a partnership agreement with IU ROTC has helped increase the participation at the annual Veterans Day run. So in 2021, we will work to have 85 participants. And we'll be planning for the 27th year of Kids City. And while the summer was challenging with new COVID-19 protocols, we plan to offer three after-hours activities to extend the successful daytime programming for Kids City participants. Now moving to the Sports Division. Golf Services, the brand-new clubhouse at Cascades Golf Course has yet to hit its full rental capacity during, due to COVID-19. However, in 2021, we plan to rent the clubhouse for 25 private rentals and increase the number of 18 hole rounds to over 22,000. Public skating at Frank Southern is always very popular along with the Learn to Skate and Hockey Initiation Programs. And in 2021, we will increase the public session attendance to 14,000. We will be most anxious to open the pools in 2021, and we will be prepared to supervise attendance of over 12,000 at Mills Pool and 33,000 at Bryant Park Pool. And the TLRC, with improvements to the weight room, locker rooms, and new front counter and customer service friendly staff, we will work to increase total membership uses, visits, and participations to 67,000. And while the 2020 National Softball Tournament was canceled due to COVID, we will host one national tournament in July of 2021 to create an economic impact of over 500,000 for the community. And again, COVID-19 affected our ability to host tournaments in 2020, but we plan to host three rental tournaments at Winslow Sports Complex to help build capacity on weekends. So looking to our 2021 budget request in Category 1 Personnel, we have an increase of 116,558 or 2%. Those increases are seen in our line 111 and also 112. In our seasonal line 112, seasonal wages are increased annually for the Consumer Price Index. The 2021 hourly rate ranges is 1329 an hour to 1523 an hour. In Category 2, Supply Request is a decrease of 34,336. These decreases come in fuel and oil, other repairs and maintenance, other supplies and uniforms, and covers several different program areas. And in Category 3, we have a decrease of 93,684 or 4%. And those decreases come in consultants and workshops, travel, printing and advertising, and water. So the Parks and Recreation 2021 General Fund Budget Request is 8,369,393, a decrease of 164,361 or 2% decrease. The 2021 Parks and Recreation Budget Request requests funding that aligns with the stated goals below. And I'd like to thank you for your consideration of the Parks and Recreation 2021 Budget Request, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. McDevitt. Let's go to council question. Who would like to go first? Who would like to go second? Okay, Councilmember P. Monch.
Yes, thank you very much for your presentation. My questionnaire is about the availability of public restrooms. And I did see in your memo that you have a goal of maintaining eight restroom facilities for public use from April 1st through October 31st. Of course, public restrooms are very important for our parks users, but also for people experiencing homelessness, and particularly important for all of us in the era of COVID when hand washing is so important. I wonder if you could tell me a little more about the hours for those restrooms, when they would be open, and whether there's been any consideration to extending the season for restrooms to be open?
Thank you for your question. Yes, we have what we call stationary restrooms, and then we also rent and own several quarterlet, and we have extensive outline and schedule of where all those are located that I'd be happy to share with you. But our restrooms are at Bryant Park, at Lower Cascades, Building Trades, Butler Park, and Awkward Park. And those restrooms are open for our park hours. Opens a little bit later in the mornings to get crews in there to clean them up, but they are closed and locked by 11:00 PM. And we do have intensive, as I said, sanitation schedule that I'd be happy to share with you.
So what time do they open in the mornings?
Park hours are open at 5:00 o'clock, but they open a little bit later in the morning. I'm not exactly sure exactly what time because our crews get out there and clean them first and then open them up. But early morning hours.
Great, and I was wondering about the restrooms at Switchyard Park.
Of course, goodness. I'm so brand new. Yes, we have restrooms at the VPV substation, and those are public restrooms. And then also, we have public restrooms in the Splash Pad Building. And then the pavilion has restrooms as well. Those restrooms are open in the pavilion when there's a rental, we have an event going on. But the other public restrooms are open again. I could get to the exact time we open early in the morning, and then they're closed up in the evening when we close up the park at 11:00 PM. And that's part of the park supervisors or the park rangers' job at night is to go around and lock up those stationary restroom locations.
All right, thank you. I'll follow up via email about the possibility of extended season. Thank you.
Another council member question? No one has any for now. Yeah, Councilmember P. Monch, you can go. I could ask some, but you go ahead for now.
I think Councilmember Volun had his hand raised as well. No?
I don't think he does.
Okay, just a quick question. One of your photos in the presentation had what looked like a controlled burn in a forest. Do we actually do those?
This was our first one, and actually did it in partnership with the Bloomington Fire Department. And that came actually at their request back in the spring of 2018. We had a couple of brush fires actually start up, and it was because we had a need to do this. So our Natural Resources Department, along with the Fire Department, had a very successful control burn for a couple of acres on the north side. And we have plans to do it again. It's really good for to burn out that forest floor and the forestation and the growing of new trees and plants in that area.
And that was at Griffey?
At Griffey, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Another question from council members. I'll go ahead and ask a question. Thank you for your presentation. I didn't hear a mention about the farmer's market. And I think, you know, it's an elephant in the room here that we should, we'd like to know, or I'd like to know what the plan is for that in 2021.
Great, thank you for your question. Well, as you know, we're operating the farmer's market. And I'd just like to give this opportunity to really commend our staff and working in partnership with ESD to do the online market. And we are operating market now with a lot of protocols in place, but it's working very successfully, and we're seeing our customer number come out. So what we're doing in 2020 is we collect a lot of data across all of our programs. And so at Farmer's Market, that is no different. So we are tracking the number of customers and the number of vendors that are participating. And we will, at the end of the season, evaluate the program. And we do this for every single program at the end of their season. So this is routine for us, and so we will do that as well. And we will make our recommendation, and the Board of Park Commissioners will make that decision. And it's not in the general fund budget because that is a program area that operates 100% out of our non-reverting fund. And that, I did have a slide in the explanation of how a non-reverting fund works. So that is why you don't see the farmer's market in the general fund.
Okay, thank you. Oh, sorry, any other council member question? Pretty quiet right now. Okay, we can go to public comments. So I think there are new folks on our call. Good evening. What we're doing tonight is allowing two minutes per person. You can use the raise hand function to let us know you'd like to comment. I'll give you, we have a timer going, and then I'll give you the notice at two minutes to wrap up. And if you have not wrapped up by 2:10, we will mute you to let the next person speak.
Okay, so the first speaker we have is Mr. Alexander. If you go ahead, you can unmute.
Hi, thanks. I'm Greg Alexander. I just wanted to draw your attention to the fact that Parks and Recreation winds up being responsible for a lot of bicycle and pedestrian transportation. I'm talking about, you know, the beeline and some of the different trails through parks. And it's really good in a lot of ways because it took them a few years to realize that they would have to clear snow on the beeline, but they do that now. And, you know, Public Works is still plowing snow into bike lanes, plowing snow onto sidewalks. So to have a group in town that's willing to maintain bike and ped path is just, it's amazing, and it's a blessing, and I thank them for it. It's also good because they have money for bike and ped transportation, which Public Works doesn't. Every spare dollar Public Works gets a hold of, they spend on cars. So I'm glad for Parks and Rec being able to spend money on this. But on the other hand, they're not a transportation agency. They They don't take transportation seriously. They look at, you know, when the beeline was open, they said, this isn't a trail. This is a linear park, you know, and they believe that. They meant that. And so they resist efforts to adhere to transportation engineering standards. They don't take cyclist safety seriously. That's an understatement. They simply do not care about the safety of cyclists from a transportation perspective. They look at vegetation as a decorative attraction, even when it blocks the path. They put statues that impinge upon the path. They put benches that impinge upon the path. They don't, when there's building by the path, they don't require a foot and a half setback, which is now supposed to be a transportation standard. And little details like this really do matter. A transportation agency should be in charge of the beeline. And I know you're not going to solve that tonight, but that's just something you really got to keep in mind. Why is Parks and Rec running such an important transportation facility? Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Okay. I do not see any other hands raised. If you want to give it a second, just to make sure.
Okay, I think we can come back to public, to council comments, council further council question. Final council comment? Councilmember, okay, we'll go Piedmont Smith first.
I'm sorry, I have a question.
Okay, sure.
I just wanted to follow up on Councilmember Rosenbarger's previous inquiry about the farmer's market. And Ms. McDevitt, you said that it's funded from the non-reverting fund. But we saw that pyramid that, you know, some activities are subsidized more than others. And that's, first of all, does that subsidy come from the general fund that we're talking about tonight? And secondly, how much subsidy is usually given to the farmer's market? And I know this year is unusual, but usually.
Right. Thank you for the question. Yes, when we talk about our cost recovery, that percentage does come from the general fund. So for example, the examples that I used, 25% is the cost recovery goal at Bannaker. So that means they rely on the general fund 75% or 75% correct. The farmer's markets, as you all know, we've had a very, very long history with farmer's market. And there was a time when it wasn't in the general fund. But over time, through the revenues that come in, that were coming in through the farmer's market, the Board of Park Commissioners established a 100% cost recovery goal for farmer's market. So that meant that it was to run 100% through non-reverting. And for many, many years, up until last year, we were meeting that goal. And we generate fees through the contracts with the farmers, with the prepared food vendors, through information alley, we have tote sales. We had several revenue streams that allowed us to do that. And that also included our full-time staff member that worked at that, that was in that position. So yes, this year is very different. But again, we don't back down from collecting the data. And we will line the 2020 data upright with our previous years and see where we are to make that determination. But the goal of 100% cost recover has been in place at least seven or eight years. I'd have to check for sure, but it's been a long time that it's been able to sustain itself.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Smith, I think I saw your hand up.
Sure, my hand was up. I just wanted to make sure I said thank you to Ms. McDevitt for this great park system that you're administering. And it's great. It's a jewel of our city. And just thank you for all your efforts. I know there's been some tough times with, you know, with the market and things, but it's just a great thing, and thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Scambolari, you had your hand up as well?
Thank you. Thanks for the new fairways. It can't be done on the pine forest. Appreciate that. And I just want to publicly acknowledge you and express my thanks. I think most people know that there is a pilot project underway in Lower Cascades right now that involves the conversion of a road to an actual bike path. And Paula and her team have been phenomenal about staying in touch with, I think you attended about two or three, maybe four of my constituent meetings. You've answered questions, you've been in email touch, and I just appreciate, not just the amazing park system that you have put together over time, but just how responsive you have been to constituents and your representative. So thank you. Heartfelt thanks.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from council members? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, I just want to repeat what I said earlier this week. And that is, and I certainly do appreciate Ms. McDevitt's comment about relying on data. But it seems to me that, at this point, the city of Bloomington, the residents of our city are probably better served if the community farmer's market is run by a nonprofit organization. Because currently, at the farmer's market, as we know, there's a vendor who has ties to white supremacists. And it just has created an atmosphere where a lot of people do not feel safe going to the market. And of course, due to the First Amendment, we as a government cannot restrict or deny that vendor if they follow the other regulations. So, and there have been lawsuits by protester, lawsuit by the vendor. It just, it seems like there's, it's a no-win situation for the city. And I really, really value the farmer's market. I have a cherished photo of myself and my brother selling tomatoes at one of the very early farmer's markets when I was eight years old. And it is, it's a very valuable part of our community. But I think a nonprofit, as we've seen this summer, that there have been successful markets in other locations. And I think it's time for the city to get out of the farmer's market business, just on principle. So I do look forward to the data as well, but those are my thoughts at the moment on the farmer's market. Overall, Parks and Rec, I think, does an excellent job. It's won national awards and been recognized for its great programs. Again, me as an individual, I've spent a lot of time on the trails due to COVID, especially when we were on lockdown, when there was nothing else to do. And I value it very much. So thank you for all your hard work. And I just, I think the farmer's market is something that should probably be left to others at this point. Thank you.
Any additional council members wanting to make a comment, ask a question? Both things are allowed right now, I would say. Okay. Well, I think we can have Clerk Bolden do roll call for due path recommendations.
Okay. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Clarity?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
No. Scambolari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
And Volan?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. McDevitt, for presenting, and this is our final presentation of the night. Hang it in there. We can get out of here until tomorrow night. We'll be back at 6:00 PM. Who's cheering tomorrow? Councilmember Sandberg, so another exciting night ahead. Okay, all right. So thanks, everyone, for coming out. See you tomorrow.
Thank you very much. Good job, Kate.
Good job, Kate.